Open the meeting?
Yep, you are open now.
All right. Good evening and welcome. I'm Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations, and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will have public participation in connection with the public hearing, major project site plan special permit for the property at forty, excuse me, property at thirty-two Chestnut Street in Needham. So that is, that public hearing is scheduled for seven twenty, and it's in connection with that that we will have public participation. And as the time approaches, I will introduce the individuals who will be presenting on behalf of the applicants for that meeting.
Okay.
For that hearing. And so first we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Actually, I'm not seeing Adam Block. Oh, there he is. He's got a photo up. Adam Block.
Present.
Okay. Natasha, there you are. Excuse me. I must admit, for a while I was looking for Ted Owens. Natasha Espada.
Here.
Okay, so next I'll introduce Planning Department and other town staff. So our Director of Planning and Community Development, Lee Newman.
Here.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Klee.
Here.
And Planning Department Staff, Clay Hutchinson, is present to help us with technical assistance. So I do want to mention, for those participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. And the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any common questions or motions. During the public hearing, if there are members of the public who wish to be recognized to speak, we'll ask them to introduce themselves and give their residential address. And all votes will be by roll call. Now, there are two motions that were done during this time of Zoom meetings, just to make sure we're all set if any technical difficulties arise. And first, it would be a motion to continue if we, if, and we have not had this happen during all this year or more of Zoom, but it's just a precaution. And Lee Newman, should I use a June one continuation date? Yes, all right. So first, it's a motion to continue, somebody would make, to continue this meeting if technical difficulties arise that prevent us from continuing the meeting or the hearing within it. And that will be continued to June one, 2021, also at seven fifteen PM. We also like to have a motion in place, just in case the chair has technical difficulties, and then automatically the vice chair will assume the role of chair for the meeting. So do I have those motions?
You have those motions, they're moved.
Okay, so those motions have been moved and seconded, and I'll call for the roll call vote. Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have that all set for our meeting. So the first thing on our agenda is an approval not required plan, applied for, in other words, the applicant has applied for a determination that subdivision approval is not required. The applicant is Robert Roach of Oak Crace Builders, and the property is located at seventy-one Pilgrim Road, Needham, Mass. On the list of panelists that was put together, oh yes, I do have them listed. So the persons I have listed, if they are here, would they say yes or here? Bob Roach, the applicant.
Here.
Okay, and Paul Bellew of Field Resources, the surveyor.
Here.
All right. Those are the only two speaking on this. So we have the application. We have a copy of the plan. Lee Newman, I know you've reviewed this carefully. Is there anything you want to say about this application and the plan?
Muted, Lee.
Muted.
You're still muted, Lee.
Sorry about that. Yes, I reviewed the plan, and the engineering department has reviewed the plans, and we have no issues with it. I think they actually intend to demolish the remainder lot, the house. I think this sits on the remainder lot. It was my understanding that it hadn't been demolished at the time that the plan was filed. And the lot is, and the structure on that lot is conforming in all respects, with the exception of a side yard. But that side yard does not being modified is a function of this re-subdivision. So it's entitled to an eighty-one P endorsement, because the lot has the required fundage on a way, which is a public way.
Okay, and do does the, does Mr. Roach or Mr. Bellew wish to say, I assume, okay, wish to say anything about the lot and parcel rearrangement that's happening with this A and R plan?
What? Yes, thank you, Jean. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's pretty straightforward. Unfortunately, there is a monument on the street that was, in the past, held to be a corner of a parcel that it doesn't actually represent. So it led to the existing houses being built seven feet to the right of where they should have been. And so to correct that, the first step in that process is this A and R that you see before you, creating two conforming lots for sixty-five and seventy-one, and a parcel A, that's a non-buildable parcel, that will then be conveyed as the two lots to the left of us come forward later with a similar subsequent plan correction to help put everybody in a position where they're using land that they own. So it's pretty straightforward at the end of the day, but it's in the purpose to correct a misconception that happened at some time in the, well, quite distant past. I mean, distant enough that the four houses that we're talking about, sixty-five, seventy-one, and the two to the left, all were constructed a little bit too far to the right.
Right. Perhaps other planning board members will have questions, but if I may, parcel A, is parcel A going to be conveyed to the owner of the lot that's indicated in the plan is James F. and Claire M. Scully?
That is the intention, ultimately. That, that's going to make them whole. As you can see, their pool currently sits on that, their pool patio.
Yes.
So to, in an effort, again, Bob Roach, the applicant, the owner of these two parcels, in an attempt to move forward with his project, is also trying to alleviate, which is a unfortunate pressure on this entire neighborhood, which
So the owners of that lot, the owner's named Scully, may be back before us with a plan to consolidate?
There will subsequently be, I mean, there's coming a plan that's going to be the Scully's and their neighbor that will do a similar process to this, other than it'll incorporate parcel A with the two lots that they have, and then clean up the line between them as well. So that at the end of the day, all things being equal, we'll end up with four parcels that everybody's using what they own. These two end up being a little easier, because the houses are coming down. I believe actually sixty-five has come down as well already, in the interim between submission and today. But that being, yeah, the easier of the aspects is we don't have houses on these two lots. The other two are people living in their homes, that we want to help them correct what can lead to a lot of drama, as we all know.
All right, thank you for that explanation. And do planning board members have any question? Or a comment on this?
I do not.
Your question?
Either do or not.
If there is no question or comment, then we could entertain a motion to endorse the plan as presented, subdivision approval not required.
Go on.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to endorse this plan presented here tonight as subdivision approval not required. So a call for vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mrs. Espada.
Aye.
Mr. Block. You are muted, Adam.
Aye, I apologize, Madam Chair.
And the chair is aye, so we've taken care of that, and we'll make arrangements for the appropriate signatures.
Thanks, Jean, and oh, congratulations on your matriculation from the chair.
I'm looking forward to that, thank you. All right. So now it's time to open the public hearing. And what, we usually have a motion to waive the reading of the notice. Do I have?
Jean, I think you're one or two minutes early. Can we just wait a minute or two?
No, the public hearing said seven twenty.
Seven twenty, my mistake, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll move to waive the reading of the public notice.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second, call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mrs. Espada.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so the reading of the notice is waived. And so I will introduce those who are going to present this proposed new use for this property. And those people are the attorney for the applicant, George Jenta Jr.
Present.
And the applicant, Catherine Pennington Klein, DMD.
Present.
Then the architect for the project, Kenneth Fayle.
Present.
Yes. And the owner of the property, thirty-two Chestnut Street, Alfred Graymont. And he is present, although he is muted, since she said present. All right, so that's the group, and so please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you, Jean. As indicated, this is an application for property at thirty-two Chestnut Street. This is about one thousand seven hundred and fifty-one square feet of existing commercial space in what has, at different points over the years, been referred to as the Jacobs Block in the Center Business District, right at the top of Chestnut Street. This space was previously occupied by the Art Emporium, which was a custom framing and art supply store. The building of which the space is a part was originally built in nineteen twenty-six. And then in two thousand and two, Mr. Graymont put an addition on the end of the building, the opposite end of the building, a two-story addition. Now, as a part of that, he went before the planning board and received multiple special permits, and that's actually, as I'll get into in a bit, why we're here this evening. So the proposal is to renovate this seventeen-hundred and change square foot space to be used as an orthodontics office by Dr. Klein. If, I'm sure you've all read my letter, so you know she's a board-certified specialist in orthodontics with some considerable accomplishments. She's currently a faculty member in Oral and Maxillofacial Surgery Department at Harvard Dental School, Mass. General, and co-director of the Ortho-Nathic, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but Ortho-Nathic Surgical Team at Mass. General, as well as a member of the Cleft Lip and Palate Team at both Mass. General and Shriners Hospital for Children. So she wants to open a small practice here in Needham. The office would run generally from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, with some office hours on Saturdays, depending upon demand. The patients would range in age from as young as maybe seven years old to possibly as old as eighty, although really the core demographic that Dr. Klein intends or expects to serve will be probably in the ten to twelve-year bracket. With that, as you might expect, she expects that she'll be doing an awful lot of braces, Invisalign retainers, as well as some tooth bleaching. Now, there is likely to be three staff at any given time at the facility or at the office, which would be Dr. Klein, one administrative person, and one clinical assistant. Now, the use itself falls within the craft, consumer, professional, or commercial service establishment dealing directly with the general public. And we did have a discussion not that long ago about this whole issue, and the board did seem to agree that that is the category. And that, coincidentally, is the category that's been applied by the Board of Appeals, as well as the Building Inspector. So under that category, a small dental practice like this, with just one dentist, is a use that's allowed by right in the Center Business District. However, as I mentioned, because of the existing special permits on the building from the addition that was put on in two thousand and two, any change of the uses, from the uses listed in that decision, require further review from the board. So that's the main reason why we are before you this evening. We're looking for further review under the existing site plan special permit. Now, as a part of that, we also need some additional relief in terms of parking. The existing parking waiver under that decision is for forty-six parking spaces, and that is because there is no parking whatsoever on site. Some board members may recall that back around two thousand, two thousand and two, just prior to Mr. Graymont building the addition, he entered into agreement with the town in Needham whereby he basically ceded over the use of a little bit of his land to incorporate into the Lincoln Street parking lot. So land that could have ostensibly been used for parking for this building has now been incorporated into the Lincoln Street lot, and is now accessible and usable by the general public as a part of that lot. So there's an existing waiver for forty-six parking spaces. The calculation is in my letter to you, but basically with the change from retail to a dental office, under the bylaw, the calculation results in a net increase of only three parking spaces. So we now need a revised or additional parking waiver from forty-six up to forty-nine spaces, and that is for the entire building. Now, the site, the building, is fully developed. The changes to the space are, are not anything that will in any way change the existing interface with public infrastructure. So we feel that it meets all the criteria for site plan special permit. And with respect to the exterior changes, if you've reviewed the plans, you'll have noted that there are a number of different things going on, although they're sort of in the, they make a big impact, but they're not major in terms of rebuilding the building. So in particular, one of the most notable things is the existing green awnings would be removed, and new, and basically no awnings in its place, except over the front entrance door, which is on the corner, and then the rear sort of employee entrance to the back. In addition, new transom windows would be installed above clear glass with sort of a grill applique or grill effect, which provides a nice up image with respect to the space. And then one of the clear glass panels would have a translucent film added, so you couldn't be able to actually see in, so that preserves privacy.
Mr. Jenta, I realize that the plans that you're speaking of were delivered to the planning board. But, and do you have visuals that you wish to share, so that anybody from the public would be able to see them? It's all right if you don't, but I just wondered. You're certainly welcome to share them if you want to.
Yes, certainly, I can, if, if, Jean, if the chair would like, I'll share my screen and show the show the plans, just give me a moment. Okay. All right, so, so, so this is, this is all the existing, you can see the green awnings that I just mentioned here. And that's the entry door in the corner. And here you can see, this shows you really the difference between the proposed and the existing. Top here with the green awnings is the existing. This is the proposed. So you can see that here is the transom windows above the clear glass panels. This is to be see-through, so you can see in to the waiting area. This would have the treatment applied, so that you can't see into the treatment area. This is the sort of small awning above the entry door here. And then this sign band, which you can see right now is the same color as sort of the building itself, is going to have a blue paint applied, so that it creates a distinctive color line. That's also the sign band, and it's kind of tough to see at this scale, but the main sign will be right, right here above the door. Now, the back is proposed to look like this. And you can see the small awning again over the rear entry door here. And then, although this isn't actually part of this proceeding, just to point out that the directional sign would be proposed, so that people parking in the Lincoln Street parking lot behind the building will know to go around to the, to the door in the corner. And then here's an image that shows you basically looking through the glass window or glass panel that's going to be clear into the waiting area, would look like that. And this is, this is the layout, although I'm not sure that this is particularly noteworthy, other than just to show you that there is a total of five chairs involved with the door in the back and the main door in the front with the waiting area here. All right.
All right. Anything further that you want to include in your presentation, Mr. Jenta, or, or anybody else in your team?
Just to say that it's a relatively minor change in terms of, you know, it's not a wholesale scale rebuilding. It's taking what is now a vacant storefront, occupying it with a use that's for the general public, and will also provide a fresh appearance to the building. So we'd ask the board to approve it as a part of the application.
All right, before I open the hearing to the public for comment, I just want to just check on whatever comments we may have gotten from town staff on this application. From Dennis Condon of the Fire Department, who is the chief of, chief of the Fire Department, the Fire Department is okay with the change of use plan. From John Schittler, the Chief of Police, the Needham Police Department has no issues. From Tara Gorge of the Department of Public Health, the public, naturally with this being a medical use, the Department of Public Health has certain comments. And referring to, you know, the applicant must follow all state and local COVID-19 protocols, guidance from the Department of Public Health and Board of Registration Dentistry relating to COVID-19, face covering guidance. These are pretty standard for the kinds of things the Board of Health has been commenting on with regard to applications. Requirements for spacing of seating, HVAC ventilation, and of course, this being a brand-new space, I assume the ventilation is upgraded. So, and then proper storage and disposal of any bio-waste hazard must be conducted on site, and with a special licensed medical waste hauler be engaged. Those are the comments from the Board of Health. And we're simply referring, they attached a letter from, or a memo, I guess, from the Cometh of Massachusetts, Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and Board of Registration and Dentistry, with various guidance. So those are the comments. I don't think those comments raised any.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Shortly before this meeting started, we got an email from Alex Klee with an attachment from the Design Review Board.
Oh.
Their comments.
Let me see, I missed, I missed.
It just, you know, it
I neglected that, I
It came in very
Just, just
late this afternoon, very early this evening, like around six o'clock or so.
I'm afraid I missed that. Alex or Lee, do you have that, and can you summarize? Are there any changes that the Design Review Board is looking for?
Sure, the Design Review Board, I guess, reviewed, I think, the proposed changes to the existing awnings and the installation of the new awnings. And the board, I think, thought the proposed renovations were well-designed. There was some discussion of the acute angle of the front entry awning, and the applicant stated the entrance is actually recessed, so has some weather protection, because it's difficult to see that in the images of the package. The rear awning, where there's an employee entrance, the signage is indicated on that awning, and the board asked about the need for that accent to identify an entrance that is not public, and suggested maybe that that might be rethought. I think they were okay with the transom design. There was some conversation about the coping at the top of the wall that was to be repainted, and the board asked whether the remainder of the building coping could also be repainted. And I think that the property owner at the DRB meeting indicated that they were willing to carry that painting treatment along the remainder of the front facade of the building. I think that pretty much sums up what their comments were.
And if, if the planning board chose to require compliance or change in plans to respond to the Design Review Board comments, does, does the applicant or the applicant's engineer have any objection or comment in response?
The only thing I'd point out, Jean, is in general, the board, the Design Review Board was fine with the proposal. The, their comments about the signage is sort of a separate thing, because we have to go back to them for sign permits, which is a whole, sort of a separate proceeding. With respect to the awnings, they did, you know, we had discussion about that, but at the end, they basically said that they were fine with it. I think, if I remember, that's, that's what they indicated, and I think that's what they said in the memo as well. Lee, you can maybe You can maybe verify that. So I don't know that there's anything that really, other than really carrying the paint forward, but the paint on the coping is sort of beyond the scope of this applicant. I mean, that's sort of the the building owner, and so I'm not sure if that would be something how to incorporate that into this decision. I guess maybe you could, but but so so I think really the paint, the the painting of the coping and and signage were really the two sort of issues that I took as being things that would need to be revisited or addressed.
Ask clarity about the awning. I I thought, Lee, that the Design Review Board is was looking for some change. George says they're satisfied. Go ahead.
I think they were they were satisfied with the signage, I with the awnings. I think the issue was the signage at the rear door. That there could be some confusion with the public thinking they can access it through the rear with the signage provided on the awning. But that is really a signage issue with the Design Review Board. And then the other, I think, real remaining issue was the issue of the painting, which I understand the property owner agreed to carry forward.
May I ask a question about that, Lee?
Sure.
Go ahead, Paul.
Is is this an amendment to a special permit that applies to the entire building? So that we could include a provision about the painting for the rest of the building, or or is our decision really just just limited to the space that's being rented here?
I believe this applies to the whole building.
So I would suggest with the owner's permission that we can include a a condition for that, but I would only want to do it if the owner is is in agreement. I wouldn't want to impose that upon him if he doesn't feel that's something that he's willing to do. And he is here tonight, so.
Do you wish just speak to that, Mr. Grayman?
Yes, I am here.
Yes, do you wish to speak to that with regard to the painting?
I'll be very happy to take care of the painting. I'll be very happy to take care of the painting on the entire building, the coping. The painting of the coping.
All right, very good, thank you.
I just want to say that I appreciate that because I think that that will add greatly to the appearance of that building.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Does any other planning board member have a question or comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just, I had those same comments that the Design Review Board had about the awnings and the coping, so that's really great to hear. In general, for the awnings, just, and I think it's it's a very nice renovation, and I think it will really improve that that corner of the building, definitely, and and enhance the building. One question about the awnings about that that's deep. What is the structure of the awning? Because it did seem very steep, and it didn't seem like it had a lot of projection for recovering, and it was so different than the rest of the awnings on the on the sidewalk and on the building. So just understanding, is there, is the angle, is there an angle? And if there is an angle, is it supported similarly to the other ones, or is it different?
Yeah, this is Ken File, architect with L Y F Architects for the project. And yes, it would have an aluminum, it would have a similar frame as to the green awnings, it would be a painted steel, a painted aluminum frame that is set at an angle. Obviously, a little bit left, a little bit right in terms of the angle, but the idea behind it was to have more of acute angle right there at the the front entry. It provides a little additional protection from the elements at the front at that front door. But again, the the door is already recessed. And we were looking to give it a a different look there at the corner to allow this to be branded in a separate way.
So just to clarify, Mr. File, there's some comment about protection from the weather, but the the door is already recessed, you say?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So this is this is more of a decorative element.
It's more of a decorative than than any practical purpose of shading or providing
That is correct.
from the weather.
That's correct.
Did you have follow up on that?
No, I think that's that that's great. One other question, though. I saw that the Hardy board, because you're changing that detail there also from the rest of the building, the Hardy board, it seemed like it had a base, some type of a base, is it stone base or is it concrete base or something to that effect?
Yeah, we were proposing that it be a concrete curb base so that the Hardy board doesn't actually sit right on the sidewalk. It's actually there to protect, you know, the the actual finished materials from all the sand and salt and as much weather as we possibly can at that at that location.
That's great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I I feel so I feel moved to say how wonderful it is to have Natasha Spada as a newly elected member of the Planning Board, bringing her design experience to our review of these projects. Any other Planning Board member comments or questions? All right, then. Oh, go ahead.
I would add that having reviewed the the design specs and so on, I think this is a great addition to the town. I think this is an improvement of the building itself, which I love to see particularly along Chestnut Chestnut Street. I thought the design of the layout made sense, although I'm not an architect like like Natasha is our newest board member nor the architects here presently. I think this is a great addition to our town and would welcome Ms. Klein to the neighborhood and wish her best of luck through the process.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I think we've all had an opportunity to speak. Paul, I mean, Mark Jacobs, did you have anything you want to?
I had an opportunity and I don't have any questions. My only comment would be, I want to add to the record that I am not part of the family that was involved with the Jacobs block. Other than that, I'm perfectly happy with this application. Thank you.
Well, we want to make sure if there are any persons, members of the public who have who wish to comment or ask questions on this application that they are recognized. I don't know, Alex Clea or Clay Hutchinson, are you looking for anybody out there who is waiting to be recognized?
I don't see any.
I concur.
Okay, so we do not, we don't see any members of the public. So in that case, if I turn to our planning director to make sure we've covered anything that we really need to in order to have enough background to prepare a decision, I guess, for a a subsequent meeting. So, Lee, if you would guide us.
Well, I think I think I think I I don't need anything additional to prepare the decision if you want to close the hearing. I think we have all, we received comments from all the reviewing boards, and there have been no comments from the public. And I think it's a comprehensive proposal. So if you wish to close the hearing, you can. And I can prepare a decision for you to vote at your meeting on June the first.
Very good.
I move that we close the hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
Mrs. Spada.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
And the chair is I, so the hearing is closed. Thank you, Dr. Klein and Mr. Jenta and Mr. Fail for your presentation.
Hey, thank you very much. See you on June first.
Good, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Grayman, thank you for being here. You're very welcome, but it was a pleasure.
Yes, I forgot to thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Grayman, thank you.
Not a problem.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to on our agenda. The next appointment is the property located at sixteen eight eight Central Avenue. And this is not a hearing. This is merely on the agenda to bring the board members up to date on the status of the this application, which was originally an application for minor project site plan review.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did you intentionally skip over item three on the agenda?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, of course, that's the major thing we're doing tonight. I certainly did not.
May I suggest that we do skip over that because the appointment was for five minutes ago. And there are people in the audience, I believe, who are here for the for the sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue item, and so if we can dispose of that fairly quickly, we can let those people go home.
All right, certainly.
That's my
A good suggestion, and if the Adam.
I I apologize, I don't I don't actually have that item on our agenda. Has there been a new agenda?
It's item four.
Item four.
Item four I have is one oh five Chestnut Street. Minor site and review.
Property located at sixteen
Yes, intro. Right, right, thank you. Very good.
I have no objection to taking number four before three. I just didn't know whether you did that intentionally.
No, I did not, but if that is, if that would help move the meeting along, I may as well. It shouldn't take much time because I I just want to call the board's attention to the letter that was in our packet May, May fourteenth to the Planning Board from Attorney Evans Huber for the applicant for the daycare center at one six eight eight Central Avenue. And he's writing on behalf of the applicant. And following discussions with Ms. Newman and with Town Council Christopher Heap, the applicant Needham Enterprises withdraws without prejudice the pending application for minor project site plan review for the project, which was scheduled for hearing tonight. And it notes that Needham Enterprises is doing so based on some express understandings with the town. And those understandings are that Needham Enterprises will be submitting by May twentieth, an application for major, major project site plan review. And this, of course, is something we sought, that this would be reviewed under our major project site plan review. And however, with regard to the review, you know, responding to the review of this General Law Chapter forty A, Section Three, Paragraph Three regarding lawful zoning provisions for daycare centers. It's expressly understood and agreed that no special permit pursuant to Section seven point four of our Needham law will be required for this project. Nor will the review criteria normally applicable to major project site plan review be applicable in this case. And the board's jurisdiction and authority will be limited to the criteria enumerated in General Law's Chapter forty A, Section Three. So then the matter will be scheduled for a hearing, and the hearing will be June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And all the materials have already been filed, both the original application and the more recent changes, proposed changes with a brand new set of plans. So there's no need for the applicant to refile everything. We already have everything. So it seems that that's not a problem. I assume my planning director agrees that that's not a problem. So that's the letter, and I think
Madam Chair.
This is what we're seeking, so we have it. Yes, yes, who is asking a question?
It's it's me, Evans Huber.
Oh, hello, yes.
I I'm not sure if it's procedurally appropriate for me to comment at this point, but if it is, there's something I'd like to say.
Go ahead.
Why is it appropriate for him to comment?
Because it's not a hearing, I assume, Mr. Huber saying this is not a hearing, so and that's true.
So you're going to take comments from others outside the board? Okay, if that's what you want to do.
No, well. All right, please, let's go ahead.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on this matter because the minor project site plan review is being withdrawn. An application will be made for major project site plan review. And if, as Mr. Jacobs points out, this is going to open this up for a lot of discussion. I don't want to go there tonight. I want, I would like that to be as as part of the major project site plan review for which an application is going to be made.
That's very very good point because I've I've read your letter. You know, not word for word, but certainly I think I I read the letter carefully enough so that the board understands where where we are and where we're going. And that's the purpose of having this on the agenda tonight.
Withdraw my request to be heard.
Okay.
Let me, let me, let me ask a question.
And and there is a formality that we should do. They withdraw withdrew without prejudice, and I suppose we would consent to the withdrawal without prejudice.
Yes, you need you need you need to vote the acceptance of the withdrawal without prejudice, and I'll file I'll file your vote with the town clerk.
So, yes, yes, Mr. Jacobs.
We've not yet done that. We've not yet taken that vote, but I have a question.
We haven't.
So I'm looking at this letter for me. And number one, item number one, paragraph one. The second and third sentences in that paragraph are came as a surprise to me. I don't know where that came from. I don't know how that agreement was reached. My understanding is that, and I think we were unanimous at the last meeting, we asked for town council's opinion on how to proceed. Have we received that opinion?
Well, we have consulted with town council. But town council has not issued a formal written opinion.
Why not? Without it, why are we doing anything procedurally? Well, why, why are we making any decision without his opinion?
Because we're satisfied that the applicant is withdrawing. The I mean, the issue was, we thought that minor project site plan review was not the appropriate proceeding.
Who thought that?
And and we're satisfied that the applicant is essentially withdrawing that and going for major project site plan.
All I did was, I thought we agreed to ask for the opinion from town council. I hadn't made my decision, any decision. I wanted town council's opinion, and I thought we all agreed that we would get town council's opinion. Where is it?
Marty, if I may, because Jean and I as Chair and Vice Chair have consulted with town council. And we are in agreement with town council that for various reasons, under the wording of Chapter forty A, Section Three, and various wordings under the case law, and there's numerous case law dealing with Chapter forty A, Section Three. It would be very difficult and therefore inappropriate for town council to issue a formal opinion. We were, we were all in agreement, and I thought that the board, I thought that that we had the board's some somewhat consent to this. We certainly have considerable neighborhood request for this, that this be brought as a major project site plan review because because under Section forty A, Section Three, this board may issue reasonable regulations on the project. But under minor project site plan review, we do not have on the project, but under minor project site plan review, we do not have the procedure to do that. We can only issue recommendations to the, to the building inspector, which is not an ability to issue reasonable regulations. And so we, and so town council and our planning director consulted with the applicant's attorney to have him, to have the applicant present this as a major project site plan review to give us that authority and he agreed to do that.
All, let me, let me make sure I'm being very clear. I cited number, paragraph number one in Evans' letter. I understand first sentence. I'm asking about the second and third sentence.
I don't have.
Now, under major project site plan review, and that's fine. And I understand that he wants to withdraw the minor project, instead go forward with major project. I have no problem with that. My question has to do with the second and third sentences of number one. How did that agreement come to be? And what was the rationale?
Can you, can you read it to me, please? Because I don't have it in front of me.
However, it's expressly understood and agreed that no special permit pursuant to Section 7.4 of the bylaw will be required for this project, nor will the review criteria normally applicable to major project site plan review be applicable in this case. Instead, the board's jurisdiction and authority will be limited to the criteria enumerated in Mass General Law 40A, Section 3.
Okay, I was hoping to avoid this discussion tonight, Marty. But I will present it. I do not read those sentences as limiting us in any way more than the statute already limits us. Any more than the statute and the case law under the statute already limit us. We have major project site plan review. We have Chapter 40A, Section 3. The criteria for, in my opinion, the criteria under Chapter 40A, Section 3, which includes case law thereunder, limits our ability to apply our major project site plan review criteria to the extent that our major, I read this that to the extent that our major project site plan review criteria are consistent with Chapter 40A, Section 3, and the case law thereunder, we are, we have the authority to proceed to the extent that our major project site plan review criteria are, are, are not in accord with Chapter 40A, Section 3, and the case law thereunder. We do not have authority under that section and that case law to, to to issue any, any regulations. They would be considered unreasonable. And we are limited to what the case law calls reasonable regulations. I don't remember if, if, if that phrase is in the statute, but, but that's certainly the phrase.
I have the statute handy and I could read that phrase if you.
I read the statute seven times.
Okay.
I know the statute. Is, is what you expressed, Paul, is that town council's opinion as well?
I haven't gone into, I haven't gone into, I don't recall having a lengthy discussion with town council other, other than the fact that we did have an extensive discussion as to the criteria that the case law presents.
Where I am, okay? I haven't made up my mind about anything on this case. But I'm a little upset because I thought we were all in agreement that we were going to ask for town council's opinion. And that the next time, next thing I see is this letter from Attorney Huber, who talks about an express understanding and agreement, which I know nothing about. I've heard nothing about, and I don't have town council's opinion. I'm mystified as to how this happened.
I think the agreement being referred to, there certainly is no agreement unless this board tonight agrees to it. So it's not something we're trying to keep other members of the board disempowered on this.
Well, I think if you look at the situation and the way it developed, I certainly feel that that's exactly what's happened.
I, I agree. I agree with Marty. In fact, I would say more than this. It feels, with all due respect to my colleagues, that this is a bit beyond, this is an executive action beyond the scope of what we had all agreed at our prior meeting, which was simply to seek town council's, town council's opinion or an expert opinion, an expert, a specialist in zoning law. You can specifically identify regardless of what the current status is of the application, but who can identify whether this is governed under the Dover Amendment or through a major or minor site plan review and what the limitations of our authority are. That's what my understanding was from our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And this does seem as though well intentioned. It is different action than what was agreed by the board.
Well, one trying to achieve the action in this letter, that is, the withdrawal of the without prejudice of the pending application for minor project in order to achieve that goal. The applicant is anxious to have this move forward quickly to a hearing and on June 15th. So we tried to move expeditiously to get to that point and to lay out this scenario.
That's, that's, that's covered under Article 2 of that letter. Article 1 creates, creates an agreement and an understanding, the basis of which the understanding I would suggest is false and is not the understanding of the board as a whole. Nor was an agreement ever contemplated or discussed at our prior meeting.
Well, do, am I hearing from you, Marty Jacobs, and you, Adam Block, that you're unwilling to accept the withdrawal without prejudice on, on this understanding?
You haven't heard that from me. I'm happy to accept that. What I'm not happy to accept is any understanding or agreement that I knew nothing about, have, have no knowledge of. I don't know what the basis of it is. I haven't seen town council's opinion. I have the second and third sentences of Evans' letter, that number, numbered one, the second and third sentences. I, I'm not, I can't sit here and say I agree to that. How?
I will point out that the numerous cases relevant to this subject, appellate cases.
I understand.
Were included in our packet for any of us to read, to see the way this issue has been treated by the courts.
I've read the cases.
Don't have a summary from town council of the law based on those cases, but we do have the cases in front of us.
I've read the cases.
Okay, good. Yep. So you, you know, you know, from your reading of the cases, what the difficulties are with going ahead with a special permit process or in any way suggesting that we could deny this project under any kind of special permit proceeding.
I've read the cases.
Well, I, I really then don't know what our next step is if, if we're not prepared to.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the withdrawal of the minor project site plan review application without prejudice. That's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll accept it. I'll second it, but I want to be crystal clear that no vote that I'm prepared to take tonight in any way is going to sanction the second and third sentences of number one in Evans' May 14th letter.
I concur.
And I want to express my opinion that we are limited in what we can do by Chapter 40A, Section 3, and the case law thereunder. And I, in my opinion, the letter does not add anything to that.
So, so I, I take it you're, you're agreeing with me? That you're not sanctioning the second and third sentences?
I don't see.
They're meaningless.
I don't see that the second and third sentences add anything that limit us in any way other than as Chapter 40A, Section 3, and the case law thereunder already limits us.
Do you agree with that, Jean?
Yes, I do agree with that.
Okay. Glad that you both have been.
So we have the motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice as outlined in the first paragraph of this letter. Is that, that's the understanding, right?
Can I ask a question? What's the impact of withdrawing without prejudice? Just for.
That means, that means that the applicant could file a new application for the minor project site plan approval. But I assume that's what without prejudice means.
So I, you know. This is common discussion on the motion, which has been seconded. I mean, I'm hoping that Attorney Huber and Roy are hearing that the second and third sentences of number one in your letter have been recognized by all four members who have spoken tonight about this as being essentially adding nothing and really meaningless. I just, because that's what they've said.
Yes, Natasha.
I just wanted to state that I am a neighbor of this project. I'm at 1681 Central Avenue and I need to recuse myself from this project. So that's why I have not given any opinion on this.
I'm very glad you mentioned that, Natasha, that of course it's true. Yes. So we would not expect a vote coming from our member Natasha Espada.
Vote. I just want to make sure that Roy and Evans have both heard and recognized what I said actually at the very beginning of tonight, even maybe even before 7:15, which is that there's a good chance, and I'm not going to be available on June 15th.
And I would.
That's when this is going to be scheduled for and Natasha's recusing herself. You're down to three members. I don't, I don't know what that means as far as what you want to do on June 15th, but I just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Since you raised that, Marty.
Yep.
I would like to ask our planning director to consult with town council because you are not going to be there. Natasha has to recuse herself. It is possible that Jean will not make the meeting.
I will make the meeting if I have to.
Well, you but just in case.
Yeah. Well, if I had technical difficulties.
Right. And so I would like to ask whether Natasha being present, even though she's recusing herself, can go towards constituting a quorum? Because if Natasha has to, because if Natasha being present does not go to our having a quorum and Marty's not there and for some reason Jean can't be there, we won't have a quorum.
Well, the quorum of the meeting is, is determined at the very beginning of the meeting. But it's true, I suppose, that.
I believe.
If we were in the meeting room, Natasha would remove herself from the table and go and sit on the other side of the room.
I believe, I believe that Natasha will be able to be counted for the quorum, but I would like to make sure.
I just would like to say something that I have a call into the State Ethics Committee. And I will, I can ask them that as well.
Thank you.
I think the other issue then is we, the hearing would have to probably be continued or then Marty would need to listen to the tape of the meeting in order to be able to vote and participate that way.
Okay, that's true. Yeah. So that's.
And I would say.
Be able to accomplish this. Assuming I don't have technical difficulties. And then the backup is, if I did, assuming that Natasha Espada was to be accounted in the quorum, we could go forward with the hearing and then continue it as you suggest.
Marty just made a comment or asked a question and I didn't hear what it was.
The next meeting after the 15th is June 29th, I think, according to what Alex was saying at the very beginning.
Yes, that's correct.
So I should be able to make the June 29th meeting and I should be able to listen to the tape. Should.
So we have a motion and we have a second. So if there's no further discussion, I call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. And with Natasha Espada recusing herself, that is four votes with one recusal in favor of the motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of this application. So I think that's, that takes care of that agenda item for this evening. And we'll move forward. I thank you. So I didn't realize that would take as much time as it did. But we now move to the major project site plan special permit and this now, excuse me. This is the decision, of course. This is the decision of item number four on major project site plan special permit number 2021 with regard to the property at 10110 West Street Needham, Mass. And this is to be regarding redevelopment of the property to include an 83-unit assisted living and Alzheimer's memory care facility at 72 independent living apartments. And we did have a hearing on this and we have a decision that has been prepared by our planning director and no, I have a copy of it here. I do want to, oh, I should mention that we did get we haven't made, of course, we haven't made a decision tonight. So tonight would be our opportunity to make that decision. And.
Madam Chairman, can I just interject for something? I'm just noticing on the participants list is Holly Clark who has her hand raised. I don't know if you want to recognize her, but I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Oh, thank you. Yes. I believe if Ms. Clark is here to to discuss the West Street project, of course, we'll recognize her. That's, but no, excuse me. I even misspoke on that. The only item on our agenda tonight that involved a public hearing was Dr. Klein's project at 32 Chestnut Street. And other than that, we we are not having a public hearing and we're not recognizing members of the public to speak. And we're all set with that agenda item. So and as you may recall, and I assume Holly Clark, because we've had a lot of communication with Holly Clark, is here because of her interest in the 1688 Chestnut Street project. And we did not allow the applicants to speak and we're we've moved on from that agenda item at this point.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, though, in fairness to her or anyone else who may be a participant, to certainly follow up this meeting with any subsequent correspondence to the board. You know, she has her hand up now, so any comment or question that she has at this time, she can certainly raise a, a subsequent to this meeting.
Certainly, yes, certainly, and all of the correspondence that's come in from members of the public, I know I have read every single word, every single email. And I know at the public hearing, we'll give everyone an opportunity, a full opportunity to speak. So.
So on West.
Where we are now is, yes.
Can I have a recollection? Did we, did we close the hearing, or did we just continue?
I straight, we closed it.
We closed the hearing, okay. But we still need to vote the relief. Do we do that before we discuss the decision or after?
I think it's a good idea to do it, to discuss the decision, because then when we when we discuss the relief, I mean, we grant the relief, we know what the decision is, that we're going to move on as the next motion.
Thank you.
But I do want to make sure we introduce persons who are here, because there may be things we want to discuss with them regarding the decision, and we do have with us Roy Kramer, counsel for the applicant LCB Senior Living. We also have Evans Huber, also counsel for LCB Senior Living. We have Lee Bloom. Oh, do we? Oh, yes, Mr. Bloom. This year, Principal, I believe, of LCB Senior Living. Also, Louise Giacanas, identified as counsel for seller. Ms. Giacanas, that means the seller of the property, the current owner?
Counsel to the owner, Welltower, Inc.
Counsel to the owner, Welltower, yeah. And Anthony Vivarito is here with us, who is the project architect. So we have, we have a decision. Also, we have, I should mention, further correspondence from the design. No, that's, that's not, not relevant. That was for another project. So we have the decision. We have some comments on the proposed decision.
While you're looking for that, I'll just state that I had some changes that were of the nit variety or correcting some typos, and I've already given those to our staff.
I know I, oh, yes, here it is, yes. Very good. The decision that we have before us, did that reflect your, your changes, which I understand Paul were non-substantive? So there are some, you know, typing errors and that sort of thing you pointed out that are in this decision?
There were some spacing errors, some lack of, lacks of, of, of closing a quote, an inaccurate reference to twenty-eleven, when it should have been twenty-twenty-one, changes of that nature.
Nothing, nothing we need to discuss, but thank you for pointing that out, Paul Alpert. So, yes, I, I do have the memo of response from Evans Huber with regard to the decision, raising, having some questions and issues with, with some conditions and wording. So board members have any issues or concerns that they wish to raise with regard to the decision?
Well, other than discussing the issues raised in Mr. Huber's email?
Right, so we'll make, we'll focus on them if there are no other issues that any board member wishes.
I have no other.
Okay. So, the the email, Attorney Huber's email raises seven concerns on their part.
I'm sure.
Through them, and, and we can discuss, I think it makes sense to discuss them one by one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I have a few minutes to just speak about some of these, some of my comments in the email?
Certainly, go ahead.
Okay, so what I've done is I've tried to group them into sort of the, the less important ones and the more important ones for the purposes of this presentation. One that I want to just take off the table right now is in my paragraph two relating to section three point five. That had to do with whether or not the petitioner was going to pay for the cost of the monitoring agent. We're withdrawing the request that that be changed. In other words, we are accepting the decision as written in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, there are three others that are sort of of the minor variety. Three point one four has to do with whether or not, among other things, has to do with whether or not the generator has to be screened. The emergency generator that's over by the railroad tracks, whether or not that has to be screened. We, the, the current generator is not screened, and we understand that presumably the main reason for screening has to do with noise attenuation. We certainly, elsewhere in the decision, we're going to be required to demonstrate compliance with noise regulations with respect to that generator. So we were, the only part of three point one four that we were requesting be changed was the requirement that the generator be screened with respect to, but we don't need to spend a lot of time on that. With respect to three point three oh, again, a minor thing. The decision as written indicates that the dumpster enclosure would be made of wood. The, the plans that we submitted that were approved by the DRB indicated that the dumpster enclosure would be surrounded by a vinyl fence. We are just requesting that that be changed to allow us to have a vinyl fence which lasts longer and, in our view, looks better rather than the wood that's currently specified in section three point three. And then in three point three, again, a minor issue. In three point three seven C and three point three eight E, there is a requirement that the certain certifications relating to the as-built and the noise attenuation compliance for the generator be approved by the board. Those are documents that we're going to have to prepare and, and submit to the board, and we were simply asking that the decision clarify that while those things will require board approval, they don't require a public hearing. So those were what we consider to be fairly minor requested changes to the decision. There are a few others that are, two others that are more significant to us, and then one that is extremely significant to us. The two that are more significant have to do with three point three one, which is the lighting. And we, I had spent some time going back and forth with Ms. Newman about the language of the paragraph relating to lighting, exterior lighting, you know, in the parking areas. And basically, the issue that we were trying to grapple with is that while we certainly understand and respect the need to reduce the lighting in the parking lot at night, to reduce the impact on neighbors, neighboring properties, we want to make sure that it's, the decision also sort of recognizes that there's a countervailing consideration, which is safety. There are, you know, this project will have assisted living, but it will also have independent living residents who will not necessarily be home by ten-thirty or eleven, or eleven-thirty, when our, our shift changes. So we were simply asking that the, this section be written in such a way as recognize that there needs to be some flexibility balancing those two considerations. And we had proposed some language in my email to try to accomplish that. And then section one point one two and three point three two, it's the same. Those two sections relate to the same issue, which is compliance with LEED, silver criteria. The applicant, typically, the most recent two or three builds that the applicant has done are compliant with a different but very similar standard called the National Green Building Standard. But we understand that that set of standards may not be as familiar to the board as LEED. Everybody has heard of LEED. National Green Building may not have quite the airtime that LEED does, and so, and they are very similar. So we, you know, we would prefer, we had proposed some language that says that we will comply with LEED Silver or National Green Building standards. But if the board's not comfortable with that, we can stick with the LEED Silver with, with two sort of qualifiers that I had added to the language. One is, we just wanted to make sure that the documentation demonstrating compliance or demonstrating compliance to the extent reasonably possible would be prepared by the project architect, who is LEED certified. So we just added some, you know, a few words indicating that that would be prepared by the project architect. And the other is just to sort of flesh out a little bit the concept of good cause for not completely meeting LEED Silver criteria. If that happens, it'll be because it's an existing building, and in some instances, it's not really practical to make an existing building, especially one of this age LEED, LEED Silver compliant. So we had proposed a rewrite of three point three two that addresses those two issues. And that was, that was the, the rationale behind why we were proposing that. And then the last one, which.
I just interrupt for one second. Also, we need a similar rewrite to section one point one two, so that one point one two and three point three two are consistent.
Yes, yes, thank you, Roy. I, I neglected to add that one point one two and three point three two deal with the same topic. So if the board was amenable to changing three point three two in the way that I have suggested, it would be appropriate to change one point one two in a similar way. And then the last.
Have that reference in your heading, but.
Right. I, I, I didn't, I didn't submit a proposed rewrite. I didn't submit a proposed rewrite of one point one two, but it would be the same issue.
Consistent.
So they were consistent. And then the last, and, and in our view, by far the most important, is three point one seven. And that is a provision which, which requires board approval if the operation of the of the, of the facility changes. And this is, this is far and away the, 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 the topic of greatest concern to my client because, for several reasons. First of all, if LCB were for some reason to no longer be the entity operating, and there was some other similar entity that comes in, any such entity will have to be fully vetted by the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. It's a very comprehensive regulatory framework that would govern anybody that was coming in to replace LCB. So to the extent the board's concern was that we want to make sure that somebody comes in who knows what they're doing and is highly qualified, that's, that is more than adequately addressed by the regulatory framework under which any such entity would be licensed by EOEA. But also, this kind of a provision will be, has, has significant negative financial ramifications. Ms. Giannakis, who's here on behalf of the owner, can speak to this probably better than I can, but this kind of a, this kind of language is, would be very problematic for lenders as well as the owner of the property. So we feel like it has a lot of potential negative impact, and it doesn't advance the town's interest, because the town's interest, which is presumably to make sure that any new entity that took over for LCB was, you know, highly qualified and, and, and would run the place well, that that interest is fully protected by EOEA's regulatory requirements and framework. So that is a, three point one seven is a provision that we are asking be taken out. We certainly have no problem notifying the town or the board i- in the event that any such change were taking place. But the provision that requires us to get the consent of the board to do that, we are, are requesting be taken out.
But then what I propose we do is go down the items, more or less in the order you presented them, Attorney Huber, and take care of the easy ones first, and then get to the, the one that you described as most important, that is item four at the end of our discussion, because I think we may be able to tick off the others very quickly. And when we get to that item, if, 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 if the board feels it, it would be helpful, we could have a Ms. Giannakis speak, speak to that as well. So, item two is an easy one, because that is the cost of the monitoring agent. You're satisfied that, that will be paid. So the way Lee had worded it originally, there's not going to be any change in that. So then item three on the generator. I believe that it's our practice for buildings that have external generators, not only to have screening to attenuate the noise, but just to have screening for this kind of industrial-looking apparatus for the sake of, of the view of the property from a budding properties. And I know that it's at the back of the property along the railroad right-of-way. But there are properties on the other side of the railroad right-of-way. They are a commercial and industrial-type properties now. We don't know where, what might go there in the future. So do we want to just stop and discuss that, the subject? And Lee, have I expressed the fact that correctly, that this is something we generally ask for?
We generally ask for landscape screening around generator installations, yes.
And actually, I believe you said, when you and I discussed this, that the, you, without going back and looking at the prior decision, you thought perhaps that had, that had been just a requirement for the prior generator, and maybe the landscaping simply died out.
I don't, I don't know specifically what happened at the prior generator installation here. I mean, the permit's almost, you know, twenty-five years old. I know in the case of Wingate, where we required that they provide some kind of landscaping around their generator installation.
And you, okay, so board members, the generator is approximately, what is the size of the generator? And like height and width, does anybody have that on the tip of their tongue? Or the project architect, perhaps, Mr. Vivarito?
I think it's, it's, this Lee Bloom with LCB Senior Living.
Yes.
The width is about four feet, the length is about twelve feet. I'm not positive of the height. We do have, we would, will have the fence on the west side between us and the railroad tracks. There's going to be a fence, so that side is screened.
I see, okay.
And south is screened by landscape, so the only thing we're really talking about is the parking lot side. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure how much space we have between the generator and the parking lot to plant there or with the access. There, there's a sound attenuating enclosure that goes around this. It's part of the equipment of what we're buying, and that's what we had evaluated by our acoustical consultant. Decision will provide all that information to the board with a letter how we're meeting the code. So we did buy the enclosure that went with it, so the actual generator itself will be enclosed by that. But to someone that doesn't understand generators, it's going to look like the generator, it's just going to be a. It's just going to be a metal enclosure. It's not what I would consider screening you're talking about. And, you know, so we're only talking about the east side facing our building. And if the board's passionate about us screening it, we'll screen it. I, you know, I don't- Necessary since it's never been screened specifically on that side. But nothing we need to spend a ton of time on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bloom. It was helpful to realize that there is going to be a fence all along the railroad right of way. So this generator actually will not be visible from properties on the opposite side of the railroad right of way. It will be visible from the parking lot of the premises itself. But it also, but it will be surrounded by a noise attenuating screen. And board members, Mr. Albert has his hand raised.
Yeah, but it will be, it will be visible to the residents and their visitors. And wouldn't you want it to look nice for your residents and their, and their visitors?
Maybe I've seen so many of them, it doesn't look foreign or bad to me. Especially where it's located. You go in now and it's very visible because the flood of the fences down and all that. I don't even notice it, but again, that's just me. I, I, that's why I'm not, this isn't a passion plea. Or feels more comfortable if we do some other screening with some landscape, we'll do it.
I, I, I think it would look nicer if it were screened.
Then, then let's move on.
Well, it sounds like we have an agreement that go ahead, go ahead with some landscape screening. Even so that apparatus will be screened even from the parking, parking lot side. So the, the wording, Lee, in the proposed decision on that, does that reflect what was just agreed to in a satisfactory way?
Yes, we're not, we're not going to change. Yes, we're, they asked us to change the wording. We're not, we won't be changing the wording.
Okay.
So it'll be landscaped.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item was item five, the fencing of wood and vinyl. Board members, does anybody have any comment about that? Or do you just want to go along with the, the wood?
I've got no problem with that.
Yeah. So Natasha-
I'm fine with vinyl.
Right. So no comment, no concern, we'll change it to, as requested to.
I have a quick question. Is the, and I'm not as familiar, is, is the wood, natural wood that would? Or, or is it painted wood or it just says wood?
It just says wood.
Okay.
We never proposed wood. We only proposed vinyl and that's what went to the design review board. So, but again, color and stuff like that.
Natasha, wood is our usual language, that's all.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just wondering because the vinyl will, will have a color. If it was, if it's a natural wood, it would, it would become gray eventually and kind of disappear. So I guess the question is, has it gone to design review and what color is the vinyl?
Anthony, do you remember if we gave DRB a, a color? I don't remember.
I don't remember either, Lee.
It did go to, Ms. Espada, it did go to DRB though.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because if you put a white vinyl fence there, you have the trains going by. It's going to get all messy with, with all of the and everything and the wood, you know.
Ms. Espada, right now what we're talking about is the enclosure around the dumpsters. Those are not next to the railroad. This is on the opposite side of the parking area adjacent to the building.
Okay, so it's not the fence that's against the-
That's right.
Well, I don't know what that fence is going to be. It may be a sound attenuating fence to just help with the train. We haven't, we're looking at that right now. But the location of the dumpster is actually a very visible area of the property. We have amenity areas to the left and right of it. So we're very concerned about the aesthetic of it for sure. And again, that's one of the reasons, again, vinyl, because it lasts. Color's critical, I couldn't agree more. But again, this isn't a hill we're going to die on either. If the board's passionate about wood, it's okay. If it's vinyl.
I, I'd like to remind the board that last year we had a case in Needham Center that there was a wooden enclosure around a dumpster. And it was replaced by vinyl. It had been, it had rotted away three times over the years. And they finally put vinyl and the board thought that was fine.
And I'm not against, I'm not against vinyl. I just wanted to know if it was going against the railroad tracks because depending upon where the location is, and I thought it was in the edge of the railroad tracks. Just the color of the vinyl, the wood, the wood weathers in a different way. So just-
Okay, but it is, it is around the rubbish enclosure. So we're okay with adding the wood and vinyl, sounds like.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And then item seven. Let's see. On the, on the request that the approval does not require a public hearing. We, we always, we are very often put in items that require approval of the planning board. And we never, we never say one way or another that it requires a public hearing. It's a, it's a practice to have the applicant come in and show us what needs to be approved. And, and we, we look at it and decide about it. But, you know, to, to start saying it doesn't require a public hearing. I just not sure about the issues that that might raise.
But we, we know that the usual practice is, is not to do it, not to open a public hearing is just to give you the plans, you review them and you approve them. So that's been kind of what, what's been done. But the reason to clarify, in the event there was a disagreement.
Mr. Albert has a question, thank you, Mr.-
No, I have a comment. This is not going to changes to the plan. This is, this is just the approval of the as-built plans and the noise analysis.
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you for correcting me.
And so, and so I've got no problem including the language where we don't require a public hearing for that anyway.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll just go along with that. So that takes care of all the items that were considered minor items. Now going to the more significant items. Item six, there is new language proposed regarding the lighting. And the new language still addresses the concern of preventing annoyance to neighbors. But I gather that the applicant was not satisfied with the wording as proposed. Because there was a concern-
My concern is strictly safety.
So just to clarify, Madam Chair, in my email, item six, there's language here that I am proposing be used to substitute for 3.31 as currently written. I had discussed this with Ms. Newman. I told her that we wanted to have some language in here reflecting the balance between reducing annoyance to neighbors and maintaining a safe level of lighting. And also the fact that the shift change is at 11:00. So people may not be coming out exactly at 11:00. So when we, the lighting reduction should be at 11:30 rather than 11:00. So what I've, what I've written in here is what we are asking the board to adopt.
And board members had an opportunity to, to see that paragraph? Or do you want it read? Or does anybody have an objection to making this change to the description of attenuation of lighting?
No, I've read it. I have no problem with the language as proposed.
Yeah, I have none either. Natasha, are you okay with it? You're okay with it? All right then, it sounds like we're all right with that. Item number six. And then item, then now we go back to item number one on the green building standards, whether it would be expressly limited to LEEDs or the National Green Building Standard. I appreciate that having been provided to us, I can't say I had the time to read it really, except for the summary. But do you want to speak to it?
Just very quickly, you know, as Evans had indicated, our last few builds, builds were switched over to the green building standard. Understanding that it's, a lot of people don't understand it. It's LEED became the brand like Kleenex. But they are very similar and it's not appropriate for me to expect that I could send you something, a lot of information today and you could read it and comprehend it and deal with it tonight. I'm good with LEED, that's absolutely fine. It's more about making sure it's okay that a project architect submit the checklist. And it's understood that there may be elements of the building that exist. For example, the envelope, we're not changing the envelope. So we may lose some points because of the construction of the envelope. That if, if we're two points away from silver and it's because of that envelope, that that's taken into consideration. That's the only point here.
So it's the, the, the changing word would allow compliance with either the LED criteria or National Green Building criteria. And the checklist will be prepared by the project applicant rather than an outside consultant. And, and it will show that the, that the applicant has met these standards, except for good cause. And then it gives an example of good cause, including but not limited to the limitations imposed by the existing building.
And it's not going to be the applicant, it will be the project architect. And Anthony can speak to it if you'd like, but it's very typical that T A T, the architectural firm, writes letters of compliance to a municipality for LEED. The major, you know, many of their architects are LEED certified there, so they're competent and capable. You don't want me doing it.
No, I understand.
So, so it would be the project architect. And again, if the board's not comfortable because they don't, they're not familiar with National Green Building, then eliminate it and, and it's only LEED, that, that's fine.
And Lee, at what stage, I have to go back and find it in the decision, perhaps you can tell me. At what stage in the project do we get this approval or checklist prepared, submitted to us?
Let me just go back.
I think it's prior to C O.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I think-
It would have to be the C O because-
Yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise-
It'd have to be the C O, but I think that should be added as, as, as an explicit statement. It's not there now. I'm just looking at that. That should be added as a, as a specific condition. I mean, the emergency generator condition is in there, the affordable housing provision is in there. It should be added, I think, also into section 3, 38, the reference to it.
My, my only question about that is that under the, the building codes, this, this is not required, this is something extra on top of it. Though right now, the, you know, to get a building permit and follow the building codes, you don't need to have LEED Silver or whatever. I would hate to have a certificate of occupancy held up because someone is having a dispute about one particular checklist item.
But without it being tied to the certificate of occupancy, what, what effect does it have? How do we enforce it? But, and, and I'll put that question out, but I also want to recognize Natasha Espada who has a comment question.
Yeah, so I, I'm LEED certified. And so one question, I've done a lot of LEED buildings and I'm doing all NetZero buildings right now. So, and we do renovations and we do NetZero renovations too. So one question that I have for you is, I'm totally okay with the project architect submitting it. There's no reason why they can't submit it, I believe. And I guess the question is, I know that the National Green Building Standard is less stringent than LEED, right? And I understand what you're saying, that you're not touching the envelope. So the type of work that you're doing for the project is the assessed value of the building. It's not, the percentage of it is not big enough to create envelope changes by the building code.
Anthony, can you address that, please? You're muted, yeah.
I'm unmuted, yeah. The assessed value, so right now we're going through the code compliance portion of the design. And the building will fall under a level three renovation under the existing building code. The type of compliance, and it's essentially a, almost a complete gut renovation. So those portions of the building which we're affecting or modifying or changing will be brought up to current standards, current energy code standards. But I, I would echo that the, the request that the building be LEED Silver scored is for, in our, in our experience in our firm for existing buildings is above and beyond what the building code requires us to do. So we, there's a, there's an aspect here of this type of renovation where we'd simply be limited in some of these items. And the building envelope is one such item that, that Lee Bloom identified.
But level three renovation requires, I thought, I E B C.
Yeah, the 2018 I E B C is now in effect. And we are in the beginning stages of understanding the implications of the new energy code. And Needham is also a stretch code community as well.
Correct. That's what I was saying. I, I mean, I, I find it hard to believe that you, if you're gutting the whole building and you're, I, I assume you're adding new systems, that you wouldn't be able to meet the minimum requirements to get LEED Silver.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a, candidly, it's a process that we have to go through that we just started. The project is working its way out of schematic and design development into, into the CDs. And I think by and large that that's accurate, that the, the new, there's new systems that we're putting in the building. The H V C systems, the plumbing systems, the insulation that we're going to re-roof the entire building, all of that, would, would, would get us to close to a silver. But I cannot, at this point, I cannot say that that's a guarantee.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't scored the building yet. And again, we, we, when I had all our conversations, we felt it's very reasonable that we can achieve it, just we're not sure yet, that's all.
Mr. Viverito, if the other alternate standard, the National Green Building criteria were used, do you feel more comfortable that that would certainly be achieved?
To be honest with you, I don't, I've never personally scored using that standard. And that's usually handled by a consultant. So it's difficult for me to, to tell you at this moment in time whether we would achieve silver, their equivalent silver. Lee had, had pointed out that some of our other projects with LCB that were ground up construction met, scored bronze or silver using that standard. But here, an existing building is a different animal altogether. And it's, I think it's important to, to make that point.
And we're, I want to repeat, we're okay with the LEED standard. But we're, we're just asking for some language so it's understood what we're dealing with and considered, which may be, it may be moot, hopefully it is, I just don't know for sure.
All right, let me ask board members, do we care? I mean, we, we put in LEEDs. The applicant is willing, had proposed an alternative standard, but now says that it really doesn't matter. Should we go with the LEEDs? And is the language that's proposed here otherwise acceptable? I'm Adam Block.
Well, generally, I, I don't think I have a problem with a different standard. I think the challenge with standards, you know, I've dealt with this issue before when I was in a, in the media business. And some of you may remember the V H S versus the Betamax as a different standard. And some of the challenges with these standards is that they can be a scenario where it's basically a bot system. And to what extent is it actually regarded as a truly independent system? Some may be more residential based, some may be more commercial based, plus include other sectors. Natasha can, I'm sure can speak better to this. I will say that, that, that Paul had mentioned when we were dealing with, you know, the muzzy rezoning, that we are going to look at energy efficiency standards for all builds for the town as a matter of public policy. So here we're making a decision. I would probably keep it consistent with our existing bylaw with a requirement to meet the needs of the stretch code. And, and subsequently, I think, and Natasha, I'm sure you're going to be instrumental in our, you know, discussion about the goal of producing- producing more energy efficient, uh, builds in town, but I would say probably for now to, that we're kind of bound by the existing, uh, building code, um, which includes the, uh, the stretch code.
So Adam, you're saying that you would delete this, uh, condition entirely? Because of course, compliance with the stretch code is, is required.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, well, um, I mean, um, is anybody else, um, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Albert, um, want to comment on this? Um, just to wrap it up and see what we're all in a basic agreement on?
I do have a question on the proposed language. There's a parenthetical in the last sentence. Except for good cause, including but not limited to the limitations imposed by the existing building. So my question is, what other good cause are we contemplating here other than uh, limitations imposed by the existing? Because good cause apparently goes somewhat beyond that in, in, what, what are we talking about?
Well, Marty, the language, the language that Lee put in there has the parenthetical except for good cause. They're just adding the including but not limited to language. What that's worth.
Okay, but I mean, so what did Lee contemplate, which he put in good cause? What, what does good cause mean here?
Easy. If, if they haven't met it, we, they show us why.
Uh huh. There's some explanation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, and you can't, you know, it's something, you may have no idea about the particular issue until you're doing some demo and find something. So it's really, it's, it's good language to put in because you really don't know all the answers at this point.
So, um,
Okay.
It sounds like we have choices. We either go with the original language, but we, I, I suppose the phrase including but not limited to the limitations imposed by the existing building is requested to be added. Um.
Also the, also the phrasing about prepared by the project architect.
Oh, yes, uh, prepared by the project architect. Okay. Um, so those would be.
I'm going to say that I've got no problem with their wording changes. Uh, but I, I hate to do this to you Natasha, because this is your first meeting. But I'm going to defer to Natasha as to the issue about including National Green Building Criteria as to whether, um, because I know nothing about this and, um, uh, if we should, and the applicant is willing to just keep it at lead instead of the National Green Building, but, but if Natasha's okay with National Green Building, then I'm okay with it. And the other, the, the other wording changes, I'm, I'm fine with.
You said it's less stringent. Is that correct, Natasha?
It is less stringent, um, and it's not typical for, it might be typical for homes or multifamily more than other projects. Um, but I'm not as familiar with it. I'm more familiar with lead well and many others, um, that have been used. I think, I think in general, I'm, I'm completely okay with the project architect submitting it as long as they have to be lead certified because that's one of the requirements of it. Um, I, I feel like we should keep the lead silver just because it is a standard and we had last night. I, I know that the planning board was invited as well as all the other boards in town to a, um, to the P P B C meeting where they were discussing, uh, net zero buildings, and they were also discussing just in general, um, the creating a standard for, for the town or thinking about creating a standard for the town regarding environmental and sustainability issues, which were also, I remember brought up on other, when there were other zoning changes. Um, you know, submitted to town recently. So I, I would recommend keeping lead silver if there is something that is, uh, a hardship because of your particular uh, renovation, and there's a reason why you, you can't meet one criteria or something like that. I think it's something to be reviewed. Uh, but, um, in general, I, I don't see why lead silver for a renovation could not be um, with, while, while you're doing the stretch code and knowing the I E B C, why, why it couldn't be met. You're in a situation where you have next to transportation. There are a lot of other points and innovation that could be um, assumed. So I, I think if it were gold or platinum, I would probably say that's, that there's more of a hardship there, but I feel like silver um, is, is doable within the codes that, that are being implemented in any case.
Okay, so if I could sort of wrap up where we are with this, um, um, it seems that we're okay with the proposed language. Um, except we would take out, um, or the National Green Building, um, where it appears twice in the paragraph. Um, and we would add the provision that, um, this, uh, checklist submittal, uh, uh, be done, um, as a condition of and prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Um, now I realize that, uh, was, uh, I think Ms. Kramer was saying that you thought that would create difficulties. Um, but I'm thinking of enforcement. Um, so the, um, is the board member satisfied with that, uh, change or, or do you want to change it? Before we move on?
Fine with me.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right then, uh, so we're all set with, um, issue, um, let's see, that was item number one, right? So we're all set with that. We've come up with some language for that.
And I just had to, uh, repeat or clarify that since this is beyond the stretch code, we, we intend to do this, but, uh, in terms of putting it as a condition of a certificate of occupancy, I would hate to spend X million dollars to build the building, have it be done, uh, be ready for occupancy, but because of some dispute or misunderstanding or something about, uh, was that for good cause or not good cause? To hold up the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Roy, Roy, all I heard Gene say was that it be submitted before the C of O.
Oh. If that.
I heard Gene say.
Submit to the board, the checklist. Um, itemizing the lead criteria as they relate to the proposed building. The petitioner shall show the checklist, of course, shall show that it has met, except for good cause, et cetera, the lead silver standard.
Right. So Paul, if it's submitted and, and some issue comes up, uh, we would still be entitled to a certificate of occupancy if everything else is satisfied. And we'd have to talk about resolution of whatever is not checked off.
That's what I.
Yeah, or it, it can be, it, it could be also be linked into the bonding authority of the board. I mean, there are certain provisions that you can get occupancy fee, an occupancy permit for if the condition isn't completely satisfied, provided there is some kind of surety provided. So they, it could be linked to that.
Well, I'd rather avoid that because then, as you know, you get into problems of, well, are you going to require a bond? How much? And if you haven't yet figured out if this compliance or not, it's, uh, it's just open ended. And it, it's kind of, it takes on a life of its own. Uh, and if, you know, if everything else is done and we've submitted it, uh, I don't, you know, we have people ready to move in and all that stuff. I, I wouldn't want to have the whole occupancy issue uh, derailed because of some detail on a checklist for lead certification that's not required by the building code.
Um, Natasha, yes.
But so I have a question. So I, I would assume that you would submit the, submit it with, when you get the building permit? So it would be way before the C of O?
No, it'd be before the C of O, but not before the building permit, because, uh, if you haven't started any building yet, you don't know all of the.
Well, but you have to submit the checklist. You have to, you have to, we have to, you know, you have to submit the checklist to say that before you build the building, that you will be meeting the requirements, right?
Oh, so then maybe there should be a link to the building permit and not the, and not the, not the occupancy permits. Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know the process like Natasha knows the process.
No, I'm just asking, I mean.
You, you can't do a checklist to say if comply with something if you haven't built it yet.
Sure you do. We, we do that all the time. We do the, we, we submit the, uh, to the client that, that we're meeting it so that they know that they will meet it by the time they finish construction. You, you don't do the lead checklist during construction. You do the lead checklist during design.
I'm, I'm supposing that, uh, the concern about, um, not getting a building permit until you've provided this checklist that shows, um, it has met the silver standard, is that, uh, with a renovation of an existing building, there could be things that come up, um, that you can't anticipate at the building permit stage. And thus.
Right, but during the design, you, you highlight what, which ones you're meeting and, um, and that's how you determine. So there's all, all, there are maybes, but there are yeses and nos. And so then you can kind of tell what you're proposing.
But then that makes it even worse where you, you, we're, we're held for a standard that's not legally required. We intend to follow it, but we, you know, there's some unknowns. And we don't want this issue to derail a whole project.
Okay, well.
Requirement for the project, right? So you have to meet it. I don't understand. I mean, legally, you're saying that the state doesn't require, but the town requires it.
Well, the town doesn't require, the town doesn't require lead certification.
This special permit is requiring this.
Okay.
This provision for lead.
But the special permit, you're, you're going beyond what's required. So you're, and we're willing to.
This is something that was offered to us, Roy. This was in your presentation.
No, we, we.
We're, we're tracking your presentation. Your client has said he's fine with lead cert, he's fine with the lead criteria.
And, and all I'm doing is putting out the issue that of course we have to have a mechanism to enforce it. And there, it's tied to the certificate of occupancy. We do that all the time without.
Can I just ask my architect a question? Cause little over my bandwidth.
Yeah.
Um, and during the public hearing, I did say that other buildings achieve lead status and that's what we tried to design to, and that's what the conversation stopped. Um, so there was just no further discussion there. Um, Anthony, for building permit, is it reasonable to have a checklist complete? Tell me.
Um, that is the process for filing for lead. So there's what is called, as we've talked about before, there's what's called, the city of Boston, for example, will ask for a checklist upfront. And they made, the, the city of Boston may say, we want you to be lead silver certifiable. This checklist is a way that essentially be, sets the design parameters for the construction project. And then at the end of the, toward the end of the project, you would issue, uh, our office would issue an affidavit saying that we've met those design parameters.
So it is reasonable that we do the checklist upfront. And then the thing that would change, so if we do the checklist, there may be some assumptions we have to make because of what we don't know. Um, and if we run in, if those assumptions prove inaccurate, we can certainly communicate with the board during construction and alert them to that. Is that acceptable to the board?
To do the, to do this second.
If, if it's customary for building permit.
Well, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't, how would we word it? It says now, shall show that it has met the lead silver.
Change has to can, can meet.
Um, well, what, what we'd want then would be a two-stage submission, one at the beginning and what. To make sure.
Lions from the architect.
Yeah. So, um, if it's going to be two stages, then we can certainly provide for that.
Yes, so you're basically doing the checklist before the, for the building permit and you're doing the, the affidavit certification prior to the occupancy permit.
I, wait a minute, this is saying submit to the board the checklist. Does the checklist go to the board or to the building inspector?
The board.
Okay.
Board.
So that's in, that's in the first sentence. Okay, so submitting it prior to the building permit, that's in the first sentence.
Mm hmm.
The checklist shall submit to the board prior to the issuance of the building permit. Checklist prepared by the project architect, itemizing the leader green, itemizing the lead criteria as they relate to the proposed building. Then we got, then we have the petitioner shall show that he, that it has met the lead standard.
Mm hmm.
Except for good cause shown. So the question is, what's the timing for that? Gene is concerned that we need to have a timing in there in order to enforce it. And the only way to do that is at the C of O stage.
Right.
Can somebody tell?
That's how we do it for the city of, yeah, that's how we do it for the city of Boston. We show them, we show them the lead checklist. This is what we're assuming that we're, you know, this is what we're proposing we're doing to meet lead silver. And then once we finish construction and everything has been approved and everything, then you have the affidavit saying we complied.
Uh huh, before you get into occupancy, correct? Yes.
So Roy, that's the way it's done.
That's the way we're going to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, that's, so Lee, are you satisfied, uh, that you have the wording, uh, there on that?
Yes, I'm satisfied.
Okay, so now we're moving on to what the applicant characterized as the most important issues. Uh, and first, uh, was item four, um, having to do with the change of the entity operating the facility. Um, and, um, uh, it, we do, uh, have a process typically, uh, when you have a change uh, in a, in a project that has been approved by special permit, um, of a change in the operation of the facility. Typical, isn't this typical, uh, Lee? Would you address this and the reason why we have this and uh, whether it makes sense in this case where, as was pointed out, any new operator has to also be approved by the state?
This is a, this is a standard condition that the board has been imposing for like facilities that are currently operating in Needham. This was a requirement that, um, was imposed for Wingate, for their nursing facility, for their assisted living facility. It's a standard that's in place, um, for the, uh, memory care facility on Greendale Avenue. It's included, I think, within the North Hill decision. It's a standard provision um, that the board has imposed for these kinds of activities and uses, um, historically. I think the reason for it was they wanted to understand who was operating it. They wanted to, there are certain representations that have been made in terms of how it's going to be operated. Um, and so if there are any changes in that operational schematic, I think the board wanted to be informed of it and wanted to be ensured that it was continued to operate, um, by an organization of the caliber that was, had presented the original special permit under which, um, the special permit was issued. So it's been historically done, um, for these kinds of uses, and the board also uses it for food uses, um, restaurant uses, for example, um, have a provision comparable to this incorporated in all of their special payments.
Well, I, I, I'd like.
Great, thank you. And Roy, if you would, um, explain, uh, or, or, um, Mr. Huber or Mr. Bloom, uh, why, why this is such a big problem for you or why you.
First of all, um, I, I've had several cases over the years, usually with bigger projects where, um, businesses, uh, and, and real estate are periodically sold, you know, certain kinds of industries. And, um, and I have asked for that on occasion. Uh, I think I asked, you know, it's hard to remember after all these years, but I think I asked for it in Normandy Real Estate Partners. Um, where, uh, you know, if they want to sell the building or, you know, some kind of operation, it's a big enough project that, um, you know, this is a two hundred thousand square foot project, that if, if a, if a major sale, uh, is, um, being held up for approval by the board, not a change of any operation, because all of your conditions in this permit run with the land. So it would just be, you know, company A versus company B operating the, the same facility. Um, and the state has to certify that, you know, that. Has to certify that, you know, that uh company B is is okay. But to have uh you do it. Uh, that's double work and, you know, what expertise do you have? Is it really the correct function of site plan review? You know, we're primarily concerned with what's parking, what's traffic, uh what's the FAR? What does the landscaping look like and not who happens to be? You know, running the operation or owning the real estate. And I know that in some cases, you have uh not put that uh provision in. And I I noticed that in for this property itself. Uh, it was first permitted nineteen ninety-three when Mediplex bought it from the Carter Company. And if you read that decision as well as the amendments after that, it's not included for this property. So the there are exceptions. And I I remember when we were first discussing this issue about you need permission from the board. Uh, in the in the late nineties, there was a planning board member named Paul Colleen. And he made the argument in the context of restaurants. In the center business district. That he said, you know, if we like a, you know, a proposed owner and operator. And we 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 he has a flair and he's sophisticated and you know, it's going to be a nice place, you know, and well-run. He wanted to have this kind of paragraph so that person wouldn't sell. To a guy in a T-shirt who, you know, is going to do very basic stuff and change the whole character of the restaurant. So that's, you know, that was the impetus from him back in back in the nineties. Something like this where, you know, it's independent living and it's uh. You know, memory care and assisted. It it's not dependent on one person who who may or may not have a flair for a service thing like the restaurant. And um, so that's why I think it's um. Uh, it it really shouldn't be there. And it also has a potential adverse consequences uh in financing issues. Uh, and just real estate issues and also introduces. A whole element of politics where I'm not worried if the five of you. Are still here ten years from now and you're going to make the decision. But you don't know who's going to be on the board in ten years or fifteen years or whenever it happens. And you don't know the quality of the people. You don't know if they're going to have another agenda. You know, we just went through, as you know. A very unpleasant rezoning uh where a lot of things were said. Um, about the project and about the people that really weren't so. And if you have the planning board have the approval rights. You open up a whole can of worms. I'm not going to name any names, but. You know, things have gotten very polarized and very difficult in the country and in Needham. And since the state is licensing us and certifying the new people. And and we're tied to the to this, all these uses and these restrictions, I think it's um. That's why we think it's so important that that approval right is not in this decision.
And I sense that Ms. Um, I thought that Attorney Gianakis also wishes to address us on this subject, yes, and then. This Mr. Huber said she would like to.
Yes, thank thank you, Madam Chair. Um. You know, I I just want to echo what Roy and Evans have previewed here on behalf of Welltower. I'm Louise Gianakis, counsel to Welltower, the owner. Um, you know, we we really see this as sort of beyond the purview of. The planning board and we certainly understand that you all want to know your neighbors and and trust who's operating the facility and we can. Completely, um, you know, agree with that and are more than happy to maintain a dialogue and provide information as to. Potential new operators, but from a a practical standpoint and just, you know, a real estate perspective, this has an extremely. Chilling effect on financing consequences. Um, you know, certainly now, but also in the future if it comes time to. Refinance or to sell the asset. Um, you know, there as as Evans and Roy mentioned, there are multiple. Other avenues by which a new operator can be vetted. Um, the executive office of Elder Affairs does a very extensive. Certification process, as I'm sure you're all aware. Um, and the special permit, you know, will continue to run with the land and. And a new owner would be or new operator would be subject to all of those conditions in the special permit. Um, so we certainly understand the reasoning and we're, you know, very happy to. You know, provide notice and provide as much information as we reasonably can if if we are looking at a new operator, but. You know, after such a lengthy permitting process on which we've made so much progress, which we really appreciate. Um, unfortunately, this is a really a major issue for both Welltower and I know for LCB as well.
Thank you, um, Ja- Marty Jacobs.
Yeah, I just want to say, um. I completely agree with Roy and Attorney Gianakis. I I have never understood that what we're doing is. Vetting a successor operator. That has never, well, I we're not qualified to do that and I don't ever understand that we've done that. What we have done i- as a sort of a partial measure that in my view was never really necessary anyway. Was we've asked for the incoming operator to sign some document that says. I've read all these to to the decision with all the restrictions and limitations and I agree to abide by all of those. That's what we've done. And the reason I think even that is totally unnecessary is because as both Roy and Louise say. All these conditions are that everything that's in the decision runs with the land. So it it is unnecessary, but it's a belt and suspenders, I suppose. So I don't have any problem with it. But but whole concept that we're vetting the successor operator to make sure they're competent to do this or they have a flair. I think it's silly. I don't think it's true.
Um, thank you, um, Marty, Adam.
I uh I concur with Marty. I don't really see our job as to regulate um ownership. It's to regulate. Uh, the size, uh, dimensions, use, and certainly the impact. I don't see that our job is. Uh, to to regulate um uh ownership. Uh, I can see it in a sense with alcohol service. Uh, where licenses may or may not always be transferred uh to a person of competent skill. Um, uh, being in the real estate business myself, I certainly understand the impact this has. Uh, for ownership and for financing. Um, but most importantly, I I concur with uh with what Marty was saying that it's not our purview to be able to effectively. And really properly vet. Uh, um, an elder services provider where there is another state agency. Whose sole responsibility is to do precisely that. Who have the precise qualifications to be able to do that while we don't. I don't think that that's really part of our job. Uh, and so I I I agree.
Well, well, I beg.
I'm like comments to to the lawyers here is very persuasive argument counselors.
I even meant it.
But do you have a problem with um something that Marty suggested, which is just that. On the transfer of ownership, the new owner shall file. A statement with the board that the owner has read the decision. That's as far as I want to go. I just want to know that the owner knows that decision is there and knows what it says.
I'm good if Louise is good.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem with uh with that. Um, in fact, that's what we used to do. With the Conservation Commission years ago.
That's what I'm remembering.
Yeah, so because no new buyer.
Nobody know, yeah, nobody knows what requirements are.
Yeah, um, so uh, you know, to have the new owner. Write a letter to the board saying he's read and understands this decision.
Yeah.
Make reference to it.
No amendment.
Yeah, and.
Roy means he or she has read.
That's right.
That's right.
He, she, or they.
All right, well, it sounds like we're going in that direction.
Yes, yes, I I agree with that suggestion very much.
All right, um, I just want to say that I think the motivation of the town in something like this, especially with the senior housing. Type of uses is we perceive these uses as serving a public purpose. And I think the initial uh approval of this rezoning by town meeting was an indication that the town sees a use like this. As serving a public purpose in our town. And we want to make sure that that service goes on and that's the whole idea behind this. Um, but I think we're we're achieving a compromise here. Of course, the conditions. And the conditions are very tight regarding the type of things that are to happen in this building. And how is the space to be used? Um, and I realize there's some flexibility built in as to the assisted living that you can change from one to the other and that's built in. Um, so um, so it sounds like as long as we're provided with notice of who who is the intended. Uh, buyer of the not of the real property, correct? We're talking about the operator who is less see under the owner. Is it? That's who we're talking about, right?
That's correct.
So I'm. And that 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 party is going to come in and operate, understands the conditions under which they have to.
Right, the oper- the operator will.
Right, so Lee, can you reword that? Uh, okay, did you get?
Yeah, I understand what I understand what the intent is.
Yeah, all right then. I think we have gone down the list and that. So now we have a decision with the changes discussed tonight. That um is satisfactory to the board and we don't it doesn't meet with um. Objection from the applicant. Um, so we have two uh two votes ahead of us. Uh, one going back to the application. And I think uh that relief that is sought is spelled out in um. Um, let's see, I'm looking at the decision.
Okay, Jay.
Yeah, I got it.
Hey, Jay, there it is.
And I'm willing to.
Therefore, the board voted to grant. All right, so we need a motion to that and then.
I will, I will recite the motion, but with the caveat that on the assumption that I'm voted. The incoming, the chair, somebody else is going to have to pick this up in the future. So.
Oh, right.
I I move. That the board grant the requested major project site plan review special permit. Under section seven point four of the bylaw. And I further move that we grant the requested special permit under section one point four point six of the bylaw. For the alteration of a lawful pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I further move that we grant the requested special permit under section three point fifteen point three point two. B, C, and D of the bylaw. To operate assisted living and or Alzheimer's slash memory loss facilities. Independent living apartments and buildings with multiple uses containing as a primary use. Such uses as are allowed by special permit or by right in the Avery Square Overlay District or the Avery Square Business District. And I move that the board grant the requested special permit under section five point one point one point five. To waive strict adherence with the requirements of section five point one point three. Parking plan does a parking plan design requirements of the zoning bylaw. More specifically in section five point one point three H. To waive the parking space layout standard, which requires that all parking areas. Be designed so that each motor vehicle may proceed to and from its parking space without requiring the movement of any other vehicle. And to approve in the alternative, five tandem parking spaces within the parking garage as shown on the plan. And in section five point one point three I to waive the maneuvering aisle width standard, which requires a minimum. Maneuvering aisle width of twenty-four feet for ninety-degree parking spaces. And to approve in the alternative, a maneuvering aisle width of sixteen to eighteen feet. Within the parking garage as shown on the plan. All subject to the modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in our decision. I hope.
We have a motion.
So so second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? A call for vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Vote aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mrs. Spada.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, uh, so that relief is granted. Uh, so now we need a motion with regard to the decision.
I move that we um accept and issue the decision as presented to us. With the um. Um, minor changes pre- previously. Uh, submitted to the planning director and with the modifications agreed to this evening.
So second.
So we have a motion and a second uh to approve the decision with those modifications. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, it's time for the vote. Um, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mrs. Spada.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Bullet Block.
Aye.
The chair is aye, so that uh decision is proved as modified. Right.
Thank you all very much for your.
Very much.
And tolerance for all this and Lee, thank you very much for all your hard work. Really appreciate all.
Absolutely, we all appreciate it.
And I know that the town as a whole, its residents very much look forward to seeing. This important building, historic building be renovated for this for this use. Thank you.
Oh, Welltower and LCB are very excited to be doing this here. So again, thanks. Look forward to seeing y'all. You'll see us. In a good way, I hope.
You 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 may see some of us applying for apartments, so.
I hope so. All right, thank you all very much.
Very much.
Best of luck. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so the only board of appeals, um, it was a.
ADU.
An ADU, um, and it's going to be a new literally constructed building with an ADU for somebody's mother. Um, I propose no comment.
I agree. I second that proposal.
Okay, so we don't really need to vote, right? We just, uh, do we? Do we customarily vote and say no?
Yes, you do.
All right then, um, I will take Mr. Upward's agreement as the motion. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved in second, that would be no comment. Um, so, um, Mr. Jacobs.
Three, no comment.
Mr. Albert.
The aye.
Mrs. Spada.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so no comment on the zoning board of appeals. Now, um, it's quarter ten, uh, but we have a bunch of minutes that we could take care of with. You know, the um staff has sort of caught up on minutes. Um, and I've reviewed all of them and made some red lines. Uh, there are a couple of little things that I I just was uncertain of and I so as I go through and would, I'd I'd like to just. Uh, ask a couple of questions. I don't think it'll take too long. Should we go forward with this? I think there's five sets of minutes. All right, um, the first set is June eighth, twenty twenty, so it's almost a year ago. And um I made some red line changes, nothing, nothing substantive. Um, is there a motion to accept the minutes of June eight, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Second, so we have moved and let me let me say, I believe it is true that a new member. Who was not a member at the time of the meeting may still vote on acceptance of minutes. Is that the is that the practice? Uh, what do we usually do with regard to votes of?
Mostly if a member isn't at the meeting, they abstain.
They abstain, yeah.
All right.
I prefer to abstain just because I don't really know what I'm voting for.
Okay, well, we'll follow that practice in the minutes. So that Albert Block McKnight, let's see. And Jacobs, who was the who was chair at that time, I believe. This is really going back. So so I guess the four of us can vote now. Uh, the the motion has been made and seconded. Um, maybe I already started calling for. Maybe I already started calling for it, but anyway, let me do it again. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we've got those June 8 minutes accepted. Now we have the June 16 minutes. And on the second page, and this has to do with discussion of 100 West Street, the very project we were discussing tonight. And we had some discussion of the proposed zoning. And then there was a vote. And then the minutes say, Ms. Newman will put this on an agenda. Then it says it will go to the selectmen to be referred back to the planning board. So I think what she meant is Ms. Newman will put this on an agenda for public hearing. Just, that makes sense to you, Lee? So I put that in with a question mark, but let's just make that change. And otherwise, there were no substantive changes or questionable changes. Okay, just give a check mark on that. So in the minutes of June 16, Mark Jacobs chaired that meeting and Alpert and Block and McKnight were there. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of June 16?
I move we accept the minutes of June 16 with the one change that was just discussed.
And that has been seconded, so now we have a vote. Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. Oh, wait a minute. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just one thing. Oh, rather. I'm just going to let that alone. There was another thing that I said was not clear, but I'm just going to leave it alone. Okay, we're not, we're not going to vote that again. Okay, so we have a vote, so we have the vote. The chair is aye also. We have the vote to accept the minutes of June 16. So then we, the next set of minutes is more recent. And so we have, I guess, three more sets, starting with June 19. And by that time I was chair and was attended by Jacobs, Alpert, and Block. And, and I had two questions. We were discussing the Highway Commercial 1 rezoning, as we were so often during that time period. And Adam was presenting what we would be, what would, what would be presenting at the upcoming community meeting. And he said there'd be about 45 minutes of content from consultants and about 45 minutes of questions. He's hoping GPI can present in less than 15 minutes. Then there's a sentence, Ms. Newman stated, "There are no cost estimates." It's not clear what that relates to. Should that just be deleted or elaborated on?
I think I probably was referring to cost estimates for the roadway improvements.
I honestly don't recall. I would probably strike it.
Yeah. We'll just strike that, so we got, so we have that one change. Then there, on the next page, we're talking about the Honeywell Street, the 8th apartment building. And let's see. I, i- in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "The FAR is half of the building across the street." Okay. We noted that, we note that, that, you know, this is the applicant speaking or his attorney. And then it says, "He noted, 'This is not an appropriate issue as the project is in keeping with the zoning bylaw.'" What does he mean by "this"? Presumably FAR, since that was what was discussed in the prior sentence. You think it's fair to say he, to change this to FAR? So it would say, "He noted FAR is not an appropriate issue as the project is in keeping with the zoning bylaw."
Who does the he refer to?
Marty.
Yeah.
And who you.
Refer to?
What is he referring to? What project?
No, he's asking who, who is the he?
Oh, it is Mr. Jenta, the Attorney Jenta.
Yeah, then I think with your substitution makes sense.
To change it to FAR, yeah, because I think that he was referring to that issue when he said this. Okay, so those are the two changes that I wasn't sure about. And now that we have made those, a motion for the acceptance of the January 19, 2021 minutes. Somebody move that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Block, seconded by Mr. Alpert. So the vote, Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have those minutes accepted. And then we have the minutes of January 21, 2021. Oh, there's just a word that I just don't understand. The person writing the minutes must have just misheard something. But I don't know what word is intended. This, all right, this is, this is again talking about Highway Commercial 1. And it, they, it, it starts out with Ms. Brown of GPI. Showed a slideshow. She'll explain the trip generation. She's shown there are capacity constraints that need mitigation. And then it says, "The Mail, M-A-I-L, Level E or F is hunting and Highland." What word was meant?
I would strike that.
Just strike the whole sentence?
Yeah. She's shown where the.
Yeah, it may, the, the paragraph does fine without that sentence. Okay. Is that okay with others?
Sure.
All right, so we strike that sentence. So with that change, and that's the only one that needs discussion although we have one more set of minutes to, to present. So a motion to accept the minutes of January 21, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A vote now. Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have those minutes accepted. And now it's simply to accept the minutes, if we have a motion to accept the minutes as, as were in your packets of February, February 2, 2021. And let's see, I was the chair, Alpert, Jacobs, and Block were at the meeting, so. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to accept February 2, 2021. Do I have second?
Marty's seconded.
Marty's seconded. Okay, call for a vote. Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Chair is aye, so we have that accepted. Well, good, caught up on a lot of minutes. So then, as far as any discussion, I think there were only two. Were there, we still have kind of leftover and not dealt with the racial equity statement for the Town of Needham. It wasn't in our packets for tonight, but we should not forget and, and just keep, you know, we should not forget to put this in our packet for one of our upcoming June meetings. Okay.
Yeah.
Then.
Jean, excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm on Noiri. If anyone has any questions, I was part of the committee that, that worked on it, so I have information if you need additional information.
Very good, yeah. I'm only saying, I mean, it's almost 10, that we probably, and if you want.
We don't need to do it tonight. I just wanted to let you know.
Exactly, that's so useful to remember that.
What I understand, the June 1 meeting right now, the agenda is pretty light, so it might be good to, to put it in for the June 1 meeting. Because June 15 is going to be a long meeting. Lee, we can't.
You muted, Lee.
Sorry, I try to keep, to eliminate the background sounds generally. But I was just going to say the June 1 meeting, I'm going to try to focus that on trying to identify the planning studies that we want to move forward with for the course, over the course of the next year. So a big chunk of that meeting is going to be dedicated to that purpose. But we, we can certainly add this as another item for the June 1st meeting. That makes a lot of sense.
And in connection with the issue of, well, planning studies over the next year, there is a piece of correspondence in our, in our packets from Stephen Frail, who, as you may recall, was a proponent of an amendment on the Highway Commercial 1. And his amendment would have gone to having more stringent green building standards applied in, to that, in that district. And he looks, he very much looks forward to working with the planning board. And he congratulates the planning board on the passage of the HC1 rezoning. And he urges the planning board, "We'd love to see the planning board continue to work on the issue of pushing harder for sustainable development." And Lee, I think that is on your list of planning issues, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay, so that takes care of our agenda. And I know it wasn't expressly on our agenda, but we did have an expectation. This is the time of year.
I've got, I've got some, at least one thing.
I should have asked, sorry.
Remind me if I'm, because I'm thinking that there were two, but I.
Yes, well, there were two, but I think I, I answered your question on the other one earlier. You want the appointment for the CPC voted on and the reorganization.
No, but I, I want to mention the CPC. So I have been the Planning Board CPC, Community Preservation Committee representative for the past six years. The terms of the Community Preservation Committee are three-year terms. So my term is up and the town, in its wisdom, when we passed the CPC bylaw, put in a term limitation of two terms, so I am term limited. So we need to have a planning board member. I checked the statute and it does require that it be a planning board member. Take my place. I'm just raising it tonight. It is late. I'm throwing it out there. And I'll, and, and we'll raise it again at, hopefully, the June 1 meeting. If somebody is willing to volunteer to take my place or have somebody be volunteered, we can, we can take it up at the June 1 meeting. I do know, because still being a member, I'm getting the emails. They are trying to put together two or three summer meetings because there will be CPC items in the fall town meeting. At least Emory Grover is going to be there. And I don't know if there'll be other applications. But so, so we need to have somebody take my place in, in time to, to attend the first summer meeting, which might be later in June. So if you guys would think about who's willing to, to take my place on that.
Is it true, Paul, that I know that the deadline for applications is in December sometime?
Yeah, but. You know, there's something in the back of my mind that says that there was something, some other application besides Emory Grover, which was tabled. That.
Yeah, there was. I don't remember what it was.
He was agreeing to, to possibly bring at the, at the November, at the October town meeting. But Em- Emory Grover is going to take a lot of discussion and, you know, and there will be a vote, so.
And then, but other than that, the, the heavy work of this Community Preservation Committee, does it tend to be in the midwinter and leading up?
Yes, the applications, we do have a meeting before the December 1 deadline. And then after December 1, there are meetings to discuss the applications that come in. And then there are presentations and hearings. So, so the bulk of the work is really a little bit in December, not too heavy in December, but January, February, March, leading up to town meeting.
Yeah, so that's the time of year. Okay, well, I'm sure we'll all consider our interest in community preservation and the various work that it, that it does.
I'll mention right now.
Historic preservation.
Marty has expressed that he's not going to run for reelection, so it doesn't make sense for Marty to volunteer because it has to be a planning board member. He'd only be there for one year.
Uh huh.
So that leaves the other three of you.
Maybe.
Let me ask you, Adam, I know you've been on the Council of Economic Advisers. What is your role in that Council of Economic Advisers presently?
So I was actually going to bring up if Paul has done a, a couple of items relating to the CEA. So I appreciate the opportunity to chat to it. So I'm currently Chair of the CEA and have been for a couple of years. This year, we've, I've changed a bit of the, the meeting structure in a pretty substantial way. I've, in, instead of meeting every month, we've been, I've kind of subdivided the CEA into three different categories with three different subcommittees, one of which is to look at small business in town. The other is to look to a district-focused kind of rezoning. So we would look at different areas, different zoning districts and identify and to be able to present through the Select Board to the Planning Board, you know, any areas that, you know, that, that could be improved and how, but not ever to go to what had been done under a prior staff person and get ahead of the skis, so to speak. And the third, which I was wondering actually if Lakshmi, our new, one of our new Select Board members might be very helpful with. This third committee is a cluster-based economic development committee, subcommittee. And the purpose of it is to identify different categories within the economy, different sectors, and ask the question, what do you need in the life cycle of that cluster to enable growth? And what are the priority sectors that can lead with higher-paying jobs or more jobs in town? And when I say lead with higher-paying jobs, that if there are businesses that we attract to town that have some executive positions, they also have mid-management and, and, you know, and early-entry jobs as well. So, so a company can move here, it may produce 50 jobs or 250 jobs. And in the course of doing that, those jobs range from $40,000 a year salaries to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars salaries. Life, life sciences is one category, for instance. Intellectual property is another category, for instance, and there are others still. So, so the, so we've broken the CEA down and we're supposed to be meeting on a monthly basis through these subcommittees. And then quarterly as a full CEA to report back on the progress of the subcommittees. So it's become more involved than it had been before. And one of the things that, that one, I identified that one of the districts that the district-focused subcommittee is interested in is Needham Center. And I think we, you've talked about some, some activities that have been happening. Basically, the CEA has, through the pandemic, looked at this as a high priority area, in particular because of the sheer number of vacancies, which is understandable for a few reasons, one of which is short-term but devastating, which is the impact of the pandemic on business. And the other is online business continues to cripple various kinds of retail. And the other is online business continues to cripple various kinds of retail. And the these, the, the district-focused subcommittee is actually looking to hold a meeting, which I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, we're trying to schedule it for Tuesday, May twenty fifth at eight thirty AM. So that's Tuesday, May twenty fifth at eight thirty AM. And the purpose of that meeting is we've invited a number of retail resident, retail commercial brokers and some investors to come in and to discuss a whole range of issues and identify some potential challenges and solutions for the downtown, part of these issues are regional issues and national, but part of them, part of those issues may be local. And it's something for, for the town, you know, to consider. So.
Yeah, that, this is important, because it also ties in to the meeting we're, we're having on June one, talking about our planning initiatives over the coming year. And I know a discussion of Needham Center and Chestnut Street is on that list. And it very much ties into the future of retail in our center. So that's good.
So I.
Want to ask, so I know, what is your your status on the Council of Economics Advisors? You, you've been on that for many years, so you were appointed by, who appoints the members?
With this select board.
The select board, and then in the past year, have you simply continued under that appointment, or are you our planning board representative?
So I've continued under that appointment. And I think it would probably serve a benefit, since I have continuity on the files on both sides. I'd be happy to be the Planning Board Representative to this DA.
Is there a Planning Board Representative, is that?
I was assuming there was, but.
I thought the CEA was, was a committee set up by the Select Board to report to the Select Board.
Okay, is that right, Lee, there's no.
Marty, we're having trouble hearing you, your mic is very, very low.
I was the Planning Board Representative on the CEA for several years, and then Ted came on the board, the CEA. Actually, at the same time, I was still there, and then I dropped off, and Ted was on it for years, right?
Yeah, so we, the planning board has a representative on that committee.
Okay.
But the only representative right now is Adam, I think.
All right, well, maybe it would be a good idea to firm up that status of Adam having that role as the planning board rep, would it?
Coordinate that with the town manager's office. In terms of, in terms of looking at the, who, at the appointing authorities and making any adjustments for Adam's position if it's warranted.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that, thank you for that report on, on the work that's being done, and it sounds like a bit of a reorganization of the CEA. So we'll, we'll follow up certainly on June one to talk about the appointee for the Community Preservation Committee. Is there any other committee that the planning board serves on? I can't think of it.
We appoint people.
We appoint people, and there are some appointments that are up, and Alex and I are going to be reaching out to the people who are service, serving in those positions to see if they're interested in reserving, reserving. So we have, we have some appointments that are coming up on July first. And we'll put that on the agenda for a meeting in June, what those, what those positions are that are rotating and need reappointments going into the next fiscal year, so that's.
Example, the Transportation Committee, I'm aware of that, because my husband Steve is the rep for the planning board on that.
That's right, I think, and the Design Review Board, so.
So, Lee, on that list of that list of planning issues that we're going to discuss at the June one meeting, do you, do you have the zoning bylaw for affordable housing? To, to visit.
Oh, inclusionary zoning? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that, that's on the list, I mean, this, I'm gonna pull it really basically from the memo that I prepared for the Finance Committee, which Jean and I then augmented for her presentation to town meeting, where we identified where that sixty thousand dollars might be utilized, which included, you know, looking at doing a, really a comprehensive housing plan. Certainly, inclusionary zoning is just one component of an overall affordable housing strategy. So I think one item on there was to actually develop, revise and updated affordable housing plan, of which inclusionary zoning would be one piece of it that we would take forward in the spring. We also talked about looking at the Chestnut Street corridor, the zoning plan for that, and whether there, what the, whether there are any dimensional requirements in particular, or parking standard requirements in particular, that were getting in the way of redevelopment, because that had been identified in the twenty.
I just, I just wanted to make, because I made some promises at town meeting. About affordable housing and about and about. Yeah.
I think it's important to move forward with it, with an affordable housing plan. And I think, I think this board needs to coordinate with the Board of Selectmen what that moving forward looks like.
Right, we'll discuss that at the June one meeting then.
Yes.
Because it is getting late.
Yep, so I, so I guess the, the reorganization that I must say I've been looking forward to is something we'll end this meeting with.
Well, I need to ask for one thing, I just want to update people, I've been working with the town manager's office on outdoor seating in particular, because I don't remember, we kind of waived all of our rules to allow restaurants to put outdoor seating in during the pandemic. And there've been a number of restaurants that have taken advantage of that. And so now that the pandemic is, is, is ending, the question is, how do we convert them over to the existing regulatory framework? And are there some changes that we need to make in, in terms of our existing rules for outdoor seating to allow them to go forward with some of the implementations that happened during COVID? And in particular, what's happening is they've, the current rules don't allow placement of seating on parking spaces within existing lots as of right, for example, or some of the restaurants have gone beyond their thirty percent capacity for outdoor seating. So we're in the process of looking at what restaurants have implemented, trying to figure out what their goals are moving forward after COVID nineteen, and then kind of looking at the regulatory framework to make sure that it's consistent with what are, what are revised or maybe updated policy goals are. So to that end, there's a small working group that's being created to, with members from the Select Board, I think possibly the CEA. It's being orchestrated through Amy, and they'd like to plan, just to kind of participate with probably a series of, a total of three meetings, which would include conversations with some of the restaurant owners to figure out what is appropriate in terms of regulatory adjustments. So I'm looking at for two volunteers. Something I see Adam's got his hand up.
Are you volunteering, Adam?
Yes, I've got both hands up. Natasha, you want to jump in on this and the CPC?
Wait, wait, the CPC, the thing is, I'm in Noori for another year. So, but this, this is, you're talking about looking at the restaurants and is that the one that you just nominated?
And it's sort of an ad hoc group, but by that I mean, it's not a continuing committee. This issue.
A very short-term commitment, I think.
Yeah, no, definitely, the CPC, I just feel like, because Noori is going on for another year, and I didn't know that they had nominated me again for that. I just feel like I'm a little, spread a little too thin.
Yeah. When will, when will these meetings occur, they'll be, they'll be really soon, correct?
Then there'll probably be, Mary Ann Cooley is going to be part of the group, and she likes eight AM, eight AM meetings, so. It will be, whatever day it's held, it will be at eight AM, so.
My goodness. Eight AM meetings, but what I mean is, we're basically talking about the next two months to get this in place?
Probably the next two months, I think it's.
That's a quick, yeah.
We've, Alex has been working on this, and we've, we've reviewed all the permits that were issued during COVID, and we've compared that against the regulatory framework we have now, we've identified essentially what would need to be modified if we want to codify some of what's already occurred, so.
I think it would be great, it works really well in a lot of cases, so it'd be good to be able to review.
Well, that would be wonderful, Natasha, you'd bring a lot to that effort, is what Adam, because of his experience, and particularly his background with the Council of Economic Advisers, and I was already concerned about this.
Okay, well, thank you too.
Okay, good.
Sorry, Natasha.
No, I wanted to do this, I just, I'm just mindful of wanting to do a good job, so I don't want to overcommit myself, especially because I, I didn't, Noori was supposed to end in June, and, and they've just extended it for another year, and and then everybody said, we're so happy that you'll be representing the planning board, I was, I was trying to get off of it, and they. So, I feel like, but anyway. Looking forward to it.
Okay. Anything else that? Anybody wants to wrap right now? All right, there we go, so. Uh, how do we handle this reorganization business?
I'm the chair.
We have been in, you know, we have used a rotation system to decide who the next chair is, and the person next in that rotation is Paul Alpert, who has been a wonderful vice chair to me. I couldn't have got through this year without Paul's support, both in the chair, vice chair meetings that we have with Lee to prepare for our meetings, the knowledge that if I really fell apart during a meeting, he'd be right there to back me up. And then the occasion.
I'm ready to take over, Jean.
Take over, and also, you know, and Marty does this too. Oh, you forgot to ask for the motion for this or that, you know, as we go along, and oh, no, yes, please, we need that motion. I, I, I very much appreciate that, that correction as we go along. So I I, I'm expecting that everybody, and that Paul is willing, and everybody is happy to help Paul.
Why don't I do it as a?
Be our chair for the coming year.
Formal about it, I, I, I will move that Paul Alpert be our next chair of the planning board commencing immediately.
All right, do I have a second, and Adam seconds that. All right, so. Any, any discussion? He.
Don't do this to me.
All right, so. The motion that Paul Alpert be our chair for the coming year. Call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mrs. Bada.
Aye.
And Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
The chair is aye with great enthusiasm.
And I would bring another motion. I will move that Adam Block be our next vice chair commencing immediately for one year.
So I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, that Adam Block be our vice chair. And so, if this is, any discussion needed on that, and from the smile on his face, it looks like he's willing to accept that position, so.
Now this becomes serious.
Time to quit your pace, drive, Adam, yeah.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mrs. Bada.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Black.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, and when it comes to thanks, I also want to thank you, Adam, for all of your leadership this year in the Highway Commercial One project. If, if I had had to lead that effort, I don't, I honestly don't think I could have been up to it, it was so hard. And you did it, and you did it with eighty-two percent of the vote. Very, very impressive, and a good job. And also, Natasha, now you're on our board, but you contributed so much to that effort. And that we really appreciate everything you did for that project.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I agree.
So. I, what, I was glad of the opportunity to serve as chair. And this may be my last opportunity to serve as chair, I think I have three more years on the board, so we'll see. But as I step down, I'd also like to, to thank all of our staff people. This has been a difficult year with these Zoom meetings. I, I don't think, I think no matter who was chair, that person would have had a challenge coping with the, the formality that you have to introduce, the, you know, the difficulty of really seeing that the other person wants to speak, because he can't quite see the body limbs, it's not easy. And we couldn't have done it without our, our wonderful staff. I mean, Lena, when our director, director is the right word in a way, you know, like, she just keeps, she has is so on top of everything, that you know that you're, you know, you don't have to lie awake at night thinking you're forgetting something important. Lee, you've just been a wonderful, wonderful.
Lee, Lee's the one who lies awake at night.
That's what I was just thinking too. Lee lies awake at night knowing that we've forgotten something.
And, and Alex, you know, Alex puts together everything for us and keeps us in communication, and is just always there for us, and, and Clay coming in and helping us with the tech support. We just, you just know, you know, you know how stressful it can be if your technology falls apart in a meeting. And we didn't have to worry about that at all for both with, with Alex and Clay. And also their, Alex's contribution particularly to when we have hearings, making sure that the people who want to speak are recognized and brought in, and, you know, that's not easy in these Zoom meetings, so we did it, we did it with this team, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully. Thank you for a wonderful year. And as vice chair, I had a lot of fun working with you, I truly enjoyed it.
Thank you, Paul.
And I enjoyed working with you, Jean, and hopefully on Friday, we'll get some good news about when, you know, what, what the new normal is going to look like, and what the timeline is to getting us there.
I look forward to meeting again in our meeting room on Dunham Avenue, so, maybe before too long. So July, I'll be back from Colorado in July, will we meet in the meeting room in July? Oh, boy.
I know, I'll, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Maybe, maybe. Okay, well, is it time to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, we stand adjourned.
There you go.
Bye.